Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin. The Planning Commission is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in accordance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Vice Chair Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flingis.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
And Commissioner Slotman.
Present.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to those rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Now we move to the first public comments section. All comments made under this item or specific action items will cross-reference to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to item number five, which is the minutes. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of October 11th, 2011?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of the October Planning Commission meeting.
Most has been made. Please cast your votes.
I will be abstaining. Thank you.
Motion carries with the abstention. Let's move to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. We have a few items. Item 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 are all related items. They are GPA 42939, ZON 42940, ZON 42941, BAR 43353, SUP 43355, SUP 4356, SDR 43352. Request by the applicant to hold those items until February 14th, 2012. Request to hold item 29, SUP 43285 by the applicant to the December 13th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 34, SDR 42987, request by the applicant to hold that item until December 13th Planning Commission meeting. Also, item number 37, TXT 43007, request by the applicant to hold that to the December 13th Planning Commission agenda. And I understand that there's at least two other items that the applicant is going to request late advance here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Name for the record.
Commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, 3005 West Horizon Ridge Parkway. Here on behalf of the applicant for items 22 and 23, we'd ask for a 30-day continuance for those two items.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we can move ahead. Commissioner Quinn, your motion on these housekeeping items?
The motion would be to approve the housekeeping items.
Thank you. Motion been?
Mr. Chairman, down here. If we can get a date for that 30 days on items 22 and 23.
That would be December 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion has been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries. There are no consent items, so we can move right on to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Now bear with me while I read.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Could I pull number nine and bring that forward?
One request.
And I'd also like to pull item 12, bring it forward.
Okay. All right. Item number seven is the tentative map, 43317, Tropical and Jones. The applicant owner is Coffin WLH Land Acquisitions LLC for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 49-lot, single-family residential subdivision adjacent to the west side of Jones Boulevard between Tropical Parkway and El Campo Grande Avenue. Item number eight is a MSP 43340. The applicant owner is Centennial Riley Development LLC for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved master sign plan for a commercial development with waivers of the Town Center signed standards at 8402 West Centennial Parkway. Item number 10 is special use permit 32294. The applicant is Jeff White Custom Jewelry. The owner is Great Wash Park LLC for a possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed secondhand dealer jewelry at 410 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 160. Item 11 is a special use permit 43314. The applicant is La Quinta Inn and Suites. Owner Ford Apache Inn Investments LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a hotel residence used within an existing hotel at 9570 West Sahara Avenue. Item number 13 is special use permit 43376. Applicant is MJ Gold and Diamond Exchange. The owner is NPING Montecito Marketplace Phase 2 LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed secondhand dealer jewelry used within an existing retail sales establishment, a jewelry store, at 7090 North Durango Drive, Suite 140. And item number 14, site development review 43345. The applicant owner is El Pollo Loco Inc. for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 2,757 square-foot restaurant with a drive-through and waiver of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a three-foot-wide buffer along the east property line where eight feet is required at 6131 West Lakeview Boulevard. All of these items have staff recommendation for approval. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, dear clerk, the public hearing closed, and entertain a motion.
Thank you. I'll make a motion for the one motion, one vote for approval on items number 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, and 14, reminding us that number 9 and 12 have been pulled off. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if my vote would reflect that I'm abstaining on item number 13, my firm represents MJ Christensen Jewelry.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, and 14 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We now move to item number 9, special use permit 43278. The applicant is Coolsville Tattoo. The owner is The Junior Corporation for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor, body piercing studio at 806 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 3. Staff report, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Staff finds that the site is appropriate for the use, and the use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses, and recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on that item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see the applicants here tonight and ask them to come forward.
Robert Gonzalez for Coolsville Tattoos.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions quickly. I know that you own a few of the tattoo parlors in the neighborhood, I think on Main Street and a couple other places. Just curiosity, why a third tattoo parlor within a one-mile radius?
Well, I have 12 total, so.
Oh, okay.
I've been here since 1987. I've had, used to be Tattoos Russ and Sin City Tattoos. People want it. Everybody's migrating north to Fremont and throughout the glitz and glamour. Everybody was going south. And I used to be at 616 South Las Vegas Boulevard. I don't know how long you've been here, if you remember. You remember, we used to have parking there, and they cut it off, and that kind of killed off the shop. It had been there 10 years prior to that, and so we closed it off, and this was a chance to open it back up.
And what's the name of your tattoo shop?
All of them are called Coolsville Tattoos now.
All of them? Okay. Perfect. And what's your hours of operation?
Monday through Thursday from 11:00 to 11:00, Friday and Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00, and Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The motion is in order, then?
Make a motion to approve based on staff's recommendations.
Motion has been made. Please cast your vote. Post. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the 12/7 City Council meeting, December 7th.
Thank you. We now move on to item number 12, special use permit 43357. The applicant is Castle Management LLC. The owner is FAC Holdings, where Rula LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 22,160-square-foot liquor establishment tavern with waivers to allow zero-foot distance separation from another liquor establishment tavern, a 1,200-square-foot distance separation from a religious facility, and a 1,340-foot distance separation from a school where 1,500 feet is required at 450 Fremont Street and a portion of Suite 130. Staff report, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. This site was previously occupied by a liquor establishment tavern, which has since gone out of business. Staff finds that the use is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding uses on Fremont Street and recommends approval.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on that matter, this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. No applicant in attendance? Seeing none, then I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the Planning Commission for discussion and possible motion.
I just had a couple of questions. Mr. Rankin, this was the Old Gillian's, correct?
Yes, this is the upstairs portion of the Old Gillian's. The downstairs portion was approved previously under a separate special use permit at, I believe, your September meeting.
Because I know on the application it said nightclub on all of it. Is this going to be a tavern, or is it going to be a nightclub?
I think it's going to act as both.
That was all I had.
Okay, then I guess a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of SUP 43357, sub all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the December 7th City Council meeting.
We now move to item number 24, variance 43315. The applicant owner is Gulang Pang for a possible action on a request for a variance for a proposed front yard patio cover, an existing rear yard patio cover, and four existing accessory structures, Class 2, with a combined floor area of 1,659 square feet where 635 square feet is allowed, and that they are not aesthetically compatible metal with the principal dwelling unit, which is stucco, to allow a zero-front yard setback where 20 feet is required, a zero-foot side and rear yard setback where 3 feet is required, separation distances of 0, 2.5, and 3 feet between existing accessory structures and the main building where 6 feet is required, an accessory structure with a greater height 16.5 feet than the principal dwelling unit, which is 14 square feet, and 59% lot coverage where 50% is allowed at 1912 Pink Ice Court. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant installs several accessory structures, carports, patio covers, without the required building permits, and not to the minimum requirements of Title 19 standards, and was cited by code enforcement. To address the citations, the applicant is applying for an 11-part variance to allow the structures to remain. Staff finds that the applicant has not presented any evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance, and staff finds that this is a self-imposed hardship and is recommending denial. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest since publication.
Declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Mr. Premychel? Yes, here they are.
Please.
This is my case, you know? Yeah. Hi, Mr. Chairman. I try to speak myself, and you know, I put those stuff in, I just try to...
Name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Gulang Pang, and the number is 43315, variance public hearing. Yeah. Gulang Pang. My name's Gulang Pang, because I never know, I've never been those places before. You know, I'm sorry, I'm just...
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I try to, you know, make a approval, you know, those structure, you know, wherever, you know, just for my living convenience. I'm not like doing business, I mean, do something else, you know. Those metal is not compatible with the house. I don't know where, you know, because I'm just a resident, you know, buying a house in my land, you know. I put the stuff in just for my good living, you know. I live in here, Las Vegas, almost 30 years, you know. I, it's so hot in the summer, you know. That's why I put one on its side, the shade, actually, just the shade, in front port, the shade, and backyard also the shade too. And the big one, that the walls are high, because I going to retire, you know, buy the RV, you know. The RV, I already asked them, you know, because when you buy the RV, that's the minimum. You need a 14-foot clearance on the door. That's what the structure got. If you blow it in that, the RV can't go in. I don't want my RV, you know, parking, you know, street, and parking anything else, or even on cover, you know. When I buy the new RV, you know, in the sun, you know, this time, you know, that's I'm, you know, just I'm a politician, you know, because I don't know if we, no way to let me to put this up, cover just for the RV, just for my living, you know. I'm not bothering nobody, I'm not for anybody's sunshine, you know, not harm nobody. So, I don't know why, why it denied it for me, you know. And then I hopefully, you know, can prove it, you know, because I put the money in there, you know, I try to follow all the procedure, you know, and then it's a good structure, you know, it's a good, you know, building, I mean, anything, you know. I try to live in there for as long as I can live, you know, good places, you know. Yeah, because anything is for me to save my money too in the long run, you know, my house, you know, if you know, my house, I got a solar panel, I got a, you know, a solar heater, you know, I try to go green on this, you know, economic time, you know, try to save my money, you know, in the long run, and nothing against nobody, for my whole idea, just for me to living and then go green, living better and better, you know. And I just don't get it to some kind of rule and something, because I'm not in those designer or whatever, you know, because that's company, they come in here to try to sell those product, and then go in and sign the contract, and then I thought they would, you know, pull out a permit, because I don't know, you know, and just pour the concrete and do something. Maybe somebody tried against me, because I think, when I do a lot of things, I do myself, you know, but this structure, I didn't put it like a big RV garage, you know, it's the company do it, you know, the floor, so I poured it, you know, because I'm, I hired somebody to help me to pour it, you know, because somebody tried against me, this, these things, and then they said too high and too big, because they want me to tear them down, because they want me look bad. They want me to waste more money, because when I asked them, I'm not exactly asking them when I pour the concrete, they let them to help me, because the one guy living just across my street, and then first he come to me, where would I clean my yard and do my yard and do the, try to pour the concrete, he said, I want a job, you know, I want to do something. So I said, okay, if you want to help me, you know, pour the concrete, I give you $10 an hour, you know, that's how I can get paid, you know. We say, okay, I need the money anyway, you know, and then he pour, and then he not do the good job, but I still pay them. I still pay them, and then cost me finally, I put another 500 more to smooth up the, you know, the top, you know, and then, and then that's why, and then he say, I am called a council, you know, I call somebody, and they try to just pull me down, and that's why they come here and they said anything I'm doing wrong. So for me, to understand is nothing wrong with those structure. It's really good, it's healthy, I mean, it's go green, it's economical too, and then from the color to the metric, it's looking so great. Yeah, I hopefully, and then, I don't want against nobody. And then, that guy, because why he comes to me, because he laid a lot of job, I supposed to let him to do it, because I stopped him, you know, I don't want to hire him no more, I don't want him to help. That's why, you know, my neighbor, all the neighbor, a lot of neighbor, you know, that's okay. My next neighbor, you know, is okay, you know, all those neighbors are okay, except the Coasey. Another couple house front, the two guys living there, they're contractor, they know it, but they want me to give them like a $20 an hour labor, you know, because I, just like a normal labor, and I am unemployed too, you know, how can I pay $20 for you guy to come and help me do something, you know, and that's why I don't know why they pull up this stuff, you know, try to against me, you know. That's I'm trying to say, I'm trying to save money, because the living in Las Vegas, the living is good, it's good, you know, otherwise, you know, how can I live there? Las Vegas is so hot in summer especially, you know. If you see the side, both sides, one on the east side, one on the west side, and front and back, it's covered when it's summer, it's saving a lot of money, you know, same amount of money.
Thank you.
I just, you know, I said, maybe I got a lot to try to say, because I just want you guy to, you know, prove, you know, I got nothing against city and nothing against nobody, you know.
Sure. Thank you.
Push it.
Stay up here. You may have some questions from people. Anyone else in attendance who'd like to speak on this matter? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. There's no way in the world that this man did not realize that he has to get a permit for this stuff. That thing, look at the size of that. If I was living across the street from that, I would be having a heart attack.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who's to speak?
My name's Cheryl Thompson. I'm his next-door neighbor. I have a couple of pictures, if you'll allow me to show them to you.
Can you just put them on the center, right there, in that square? And there's a camera above you that'll zoom down on there.
Oops, one more. One more. There you go.
Okay, I have three pictures.
Just spread them all out, and the camera up top will show them all. You just point to them as you talk. You're good.
That's your view, huh?
Name and address for the record.
1916 Pink Ice Court. I'm his next-door neighbor. This is my view. Like you said, I have nothing against him. We've been neighbors for years, and one Saturday, they built this. I didn't know anything about this. I was not informed, I was not aware of this. They started bringing material across my yard and started building it. This thing is massive. I, as you can see, I, one of these views is the view from my front door. There's no view. The view, there's another picture from my kitchen window where I used to have a view, it's gone. And another one is from, this one is from my sidewalk. It's gone. That's all I see. That is just too massive. People, when they come by to visit, they ask me, what is that? If I ever decide to sell my house, no way, no one's going to buy a house next to that. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who's to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Excuse me, what was your name, ma'am?
Cheryl Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, thank you. I just want to make a brief comment, because I think that, I'm sure the commissioner of the ward was out there, and I drove by there. Mr. Pang, you have to understand that there's nobody that's against you. The problem is, sir, is when something like this is started in a neighborhood, then maybe the guy next door thinks he can do it, and then the guy down the street is going to do it, and before you know it, what we have is what's called a warehouse neighborhood. This takes away from the neighborhood feeling, because what's good for you should be able to be good for everybody else, and unfortunately, this is not conducive with a neighborhood. And it's not because nobody's against you, it's just because it does not belong here. Thank you.
Can I say something?
No, it's already, there may be a question in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I was out at your house today, and I know you said he had put some stuff in the yard, but you see some footprints out there, look like Bigfoot. That was me. About a size 15, so I was in your yard taking pictures today. But I stopped by Mr. Pang's house, because this was of a concern, and I spoke with him today around noon, and what he explained to me is he has a motor home that he'd like to store. So I asked him to give me a quick tour of the property. There are a number of metal structures, like the garage. There was also a couple of patio covers that were also erected onto the site. What this turned into is basically Mr. Pang hired somebody to build these. Of course, I asked him, did you pull a permit? He said, no. I asked him, did your contractor pull a permit? He said he didn't, no. He just paid the gentleman to build it. The intent was great, because what he did is he included some of his neighbors, and I can remember as a kid growing up in my old neighborhood, when we put in front lawns, all the men in the neighborhood come and help and get the lawn in. In this case, and this has turned into a neighbor dispute, because he actually asked a neighbor across the street that was unemployed to come help him pour the concrete.
No, 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 sorry, I'm not asking, he come to...
Well, he came to him, so he hired this neighbor to help with the concrete, and things didn't go well after that. I have some concerns, because Mr. Pang advised me that all my neighbors are all for this. I've had no complaints. He really highlighted you being next door. While I was out there, there were a couple of neighbors that were outside, so I just walked down the street a couple of houses and asked a few neighbors what were their feelings on it. There's a lot of opposition. A number of the neighbors did receive the opposition cards in the mail. They had failed to put them in in a timely manner. I explained to them the importance of that and what it does for us as a commission. What I was able to do while I was on the street today at 12 o'clock, I was able to collect one, two, three, four, five more oppositions, which I'd like to give to the Madam Clerk to put on the record. But you're absolutely right. Aesthetically pleasing, it is not. It is not up to code. It is a humongous structure in the neighborhood. I do give Mr. Pang some credit for going green. In his backyard, he has one, two, three arrays of solar panels. They're at the height of about 8 to 10 feet. It's a congested backyard, because there's another metal awning being constructed in addition to a wood structure, which looks like it's been up for some period of time. I asked Mr. Pang had he pull permits on that, which he hasn't. So this is a classic case of, you know, building on your property. I don't know if you want to claim you didn't know, but as I explained to Mr. Pang, everything you do, you may need to consult the city to find out if there's a permit process to build that. Now, I understand that he has, not issues, but he has some concerns, valid concerns, about the sun and being able to shade his house. But I explained to him, you can't do that by surrounding the house with metal awning structures to provide shade. I looked at his house, and I explained to him, there are various ways to envy energy, there's energy-efficient businesses out there. I looked at his windows, I asked him about the double panes on the windows and things that he can do, and there are programs that you can go through at Nevada Energy that'll come out and assess your house and provide you everything you need to make that home energy-efficient. It is aesthetically not pleasing, and I explained to Mr. Pang that I'm only one vote up here tonight, but I am going to have to follow staff's recommendations on this, simply because there's an overwhelming opposition from the neighbors in the neighborhood, and it really is an aesthetically non-pleasing structure that's in the yard. And, you know, Mr. Pang, everything I'm telling now is what I told you, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to deny this request tonight. It's going to be... It's going to be my motion. One other thing, I looked at the driveway as well. And I have some concerns on that driveway because it's not a finished concrete. And from what I understand with the neighbors is that the, the foundation was dug, but there was no rebar or anything.
Yeah, there's a rebar.
Is there rebar in that driveway?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And so, from what I understood and talking to some neighbors, they just, one day a cement truck came, poured eighteen yards of concrete. The concrete start drying because of the heat and so they had to scramble to try to finish it. And if you look at that driveway, it is not a professional finished driveway and I'm very concerned about the, the, what's up underneath it.
There's a rebar underneath.
You know, so, that's, and your patio on the front, the one that's got the concrete, the pipes coming up, are you planning to put a, a?
No, it's for the flower, you know, for the water, watering both, you know, can you see the flower on the both side, try to plan?
You're not planning on putting a restroom or anything out front there?
No, for the patio, no.
Okay.
For, yeah, go to pride, go through the driveway, you know, the original, they have the pipe underneath the driveway. Yeah, I just go through it and put the pipe in it for the water, for the pan on both sides. Yeah.
So, you know, and I could almost live with letting you have the, the awning that your car sits on in the driveway because, you know, but, but still, it, it needs to go through the proper permitting process.
I know, that's what I'm trying to do, yeah.
And so, so with that, those are my.
Require and I try to, you know.
Those are my concerns, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
To make, I, I could only add and say that I, it looks like you spent a lot of money and hired a contractor to install this. And at some point in time, someone should have known that a project of this magnitude required permits and inspections. And I don't know whether you were the, the party that didn't know, but the contractor that did it should have certainly known.
I got, I got their names or the, or the contract and company names or all they come in here.
You need to address that yourself.
Yeah, I, I got anything, you know, I got anything, you know, it's a big company.
Owns company, maybe you own part of it, who knows?
I hope.
Okay, you just might. I think we're ready for a motion unless someone has a mo, another comment.
Byron.
Byron, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, on item twenty-four, move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion to deny has been approved. Item number twenty.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
So how can I appeal? Go to where?
Appeals may be submitted to the city clerk's office.
City court office? Do I have all kind of instruction and paper and phone number and?
A member of staff will get with you afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now we moved item number twenty-five, variance forty-three, three thirty-one. The applicant owner is Emmanuel Hernandez for a possible action on a request for a variance to allow an eight-foot front yard setback for an existing attached carport where twenty feet is required at fifty-five seventeen Bromley Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that this is a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone to attend, wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Sir?
I'm here about the carport.
Your name, your name, sir?
Yes, I built it without a permit.
No, your, your name, sir.
How's that?
Your name.
My name? Manuel Hernandez.
Thank you. Go ahead now.
And I, I applied for a variance permit back in oh-six and I got it and I thought that was all I needed. Because being that I never built anything before in my life, I thought that was all I needed. And I went on and built it without a permit.
You said you, in oh-six, you applied for a variance permit and you got it?
I can't hear you.
You said that in, in two thousand and six, you applied for a variance permit and you received it?
Yes.
And so you went ahead and built it without a permit? That's, doesn't fit together. Which, what, what happened? Did you get the permit for a variance or not?
No.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can clarify. The planning commission in two thousand and six did approve a variance for a front yard setback for fourteen and a half feet, where twenty feet is required at this location. And without the permit, then the variance would itself expire after one year, which it did.
He, so he built what he asked to build?
Correct.
But he did it too late?
He did it too late without permit.
Okay, thank you. Proceed, sir, go ahead.
Is that it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
No, no, I mean, finish what you have to say, I'm sorry. Finish what you have to say, if you have anything more to add.
I can't hear you.
Do you have anything else to say?
That I like to keep my carport if it's possible. If not, I would like to apply for permit to build it according to my neighbors. You know, my, my carport is further down to the city property than the neighbors. Mine is only eight, eight foot nine from city property and my neighbors has thirteen feet. And I was, would like to know if I can keep it the way it is. I'd like to alter it the way my neighbors have theirs, if it's possible.
Okay, when did you build this?
When did I build it?
Yes.
In April of oh-six.
Okay, thank, thank you. Anyone else to attend, wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Go ahead, please.
I was, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Hernandez, while he's, didn't get his building permit, at least started out on the right foot for this. And I think this commission actually, you know, approved his request back then. Unlike the previous item before us, this is compatible with the house. It's in scale and I think while we still need, he'd still need to get his permit and do all the other things, I think this is an appropriate, this would be an appropriate waiver or variance on, and I would support it.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, motion is in order then.
Yeah, I was, excuse me, I was just going to say exactly what Commissioner Truesdale said, that, you know, it, it looks nice and you just kind of did it a little bit later than you should have. And it looks nice and the house looks good, so we're going to approve it with the condition that he gets, does he need to get a building permit now?
Yes, that is correct. It's, it's a condition of approval that he gets a building.
So the condition of approval is that you go and get a building permit. You don't have to tear it down, you don't have to do anything, you just have to follow through with the paperwork. Okay, so you're in good shape. All right? Okay, so my recommendation is for approval with the condition that you get the building permit.
Building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to the December seventh city council meeting.
We now move to item number twenty-six and companion items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Item number twenty-seven is a variance forty-three, three fifty-nine. The applicant is Buston Suds Car Wash. The owner is JGM Holdings LLC for a possible action or request for a variance to allow twenty-one parking spaces where twenty-seven parking spaces are required at thirteen twenty-six North Martin Luther King Boulevard. Item number twenty-seven is special use permit forty-three, three fifty-eight for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a car wash, full service or auto detailing. And item number twenty-eight is site development review forty-three, three sixty for possible action or request for site development plan review for proposed three thousand nine hundred eighty-five square foot car wash, full service with or auto detailing. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed full service car wash does meet the Title nineteen Development and Landscaping standards and is consistent with the West Las Vegas neighborhood plan. The applicant has stated that all the mechanical and vacuum equipment will be contained inside the, the principal structure. And he's also proposing a eight-foot wall and landscaping along the east property line to further buffer the residential from the proposed car wash. Staff supports the requested parking variance as this is a narrow lot and therefore creates a unique circumstance in which they cannot get all the parking in without losing landscape or losing a building footprint. With the approval of the parking variance, the proposal meets all nineteen, all Title nineteen standards and staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. Anyone to attend, wish to speak, please approach the microphone, state your name for the record.
My name's John Riddell with Riddell Architects, representing Buston Suds. We accept all the staff conditions and recommendations and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Anyone else to attend, wish to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Are there restroom facilities in this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else to attend, wish to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. I, I noticed in the backup material that you did install indoor vacuums so that the noise suppression measures are in place.
Correct, sir. Correct, Chairman.
Thank you.
We, we put it all inside.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, this item was in this neighborhood today as well. Spoke to a couple of residents, one resident named Miss Gary, who if you look in the photos that are displayed, you'll see a two-story house and you'll see two houses that are to the, in our photo, to the left of that. That house is, in the middle is owned by Miss Gary. She also owns the house to the right where her daughter lives and also another gentleman that's been there. These neighbors have been there since nineteen sixty-three. They explained to me that somebody came through the neighborhood talking about the car wash. They two, again, are in opposition. Again, I expressed the need for them to fill out their cards. They actually gave them to me right there on the spot again today. So there are some concerns of having a car wash right up on their backyard. One lady, Andrea Sales, who lives on N Street, has a concern because she utilized the patio out on her backyard. And the last thing she wanted to imagine was having to sit out there and deal with a car wash. So if you bear with me for a couple moments, I'm going to read into the record her opposition and then we'll, we'll go from there. It says, Dear Planning Commissioner Goines, we are one hundred percent in opposition to the applicant Buston Suds establishing a business directly behind our home located eleven, at fourteen eleven North N Street. We have been in this location for, they've built that house and have been in that house for ten years. Our home is compatible to the homes located in Summerlin and over twenty-eight hundred square feet. We paid extra to have a balcony built onto our home to enjoy the view of Mount Charleston and now the beautiful landscape Councilman Barlow was instrumental in getting for the Martin Luther King Boulevard. We do not want our quiet community disrupted by having a full-service car wash located directly behind our home. We are concerned about the noise levels that are usually associated with a car wash and the hours of operation. We currently have a six-foot block wall in our backyard and we do not want a higher fence built next to our block wall. This will make us feel as though we were behind a prison wall cut off from society. We grew up in this neighborhood and could have lived anywhere in Las Vegas Valley, but we chose to custom build our home in the West Las Vegas area to support the revitalization of the west side and because it was a quiet community. To reiterate, we are in opposition of the Buston Suds application to place a full-service car wash directly behind our home. Her mother, Augusta Gary, my mother and brother and myself own the house located at fourteen twenty-one N Street. We are one hundred percent opposition, opposition to establishing a business behind our property. This is one of the first homes built on N Street. Our home was built in nineteen sixty-four. It's one of the few ranch-style homes located in historical West Las Vegas, better known as the west side. My mother decided to have our property enclosed with a chain-linked fence so that the view would not be obstructed. And again, a full-service car wash to be built behind a residential area would disrupt our quiet neighborhood. We are concerned about the noise levels that are usually associated with the car wash and the hours of operation. So there is some concern from neighbors that will be directly affected and, and unfortunately, you, you've got these three homes back here and they all happen to be owned by the same, well, two of them by the same people. So their concerns, and I told them I'd bring this up tonight, is, is the hours of operation. I also wanted to go through your plan to, to see how close on that wall. I want to know, are you planning on constructing a wall higher than the six-foot existing residential wall on the Sales house?
Yes, we are. We're proposing eight-foot. It was a staff recommendation through our meetings and our pre-application that we have an eight-foot wall across that back property, sir.
So this is full service? Are your, are, are your, are you going to be able to vacuum your own car?
Yes. What this is, is a full-service car wash with what they call a flex serve, sir. At the time of payment, on the south end, there's a couple pay stations, you can do a lesser fee amount that allows you to do your own vacuuming and you can get a flex serve car wash for, you know, five ninety-nine. Or you can have the full service where the tenant will wipe your car down and vacuum it itself. We took into consideration those neighbors, the first time we looked at the site. And those considerations, I, I do a lot of car washes, so I know the number one is the noise and the hours of operation. That's always the first thing that comes up. We located the tunnel of the car wash out along MLK as far away from the residential as possible. The noise from a car wash comes from two major functions, the vacuum motors and the dryers, the blowers they're called. We have the vacuum motors housed within the building structure. They are totally inside. The lines then go underground out to that vacuum area where you get just the, the suction noise, which is a very minimal noise because the motors are all concealed. The dryer.
Keep in mind, you, you say minimal, but you've got somebody that's got to live there.
Yes, it is minimal. I would try to explain it from a vacuum standpoint, your in-house vacuums that are the central vacuum systems, when you pick it up and, and do something inside the house, you don't hear the motor because the motor is in a different location. And it's a very minimal, it's not like you pull into having a thirty horsepower motor, you know, out there by it. It's a very minimal amount. The other is the blowers, which are the dryers of the car wash. They're housed inside the tunnel. The tunnel openings go north and south that only have commercial properties at each end. And we have the tunnel more or less centered in our property, which gives us large distances to the north and large distance to the south, even to the vacant land. The eight-foot wall, and then we did some enhanced landscape along that east side also to help, you know, to separate the, the commercial from the residential. It is its own commercial. It could be a, a drive-through, you know, fast food restaurant or something else. So we have the hours of operation at a max, which is in our conditions that the staff has approved to seven to seven. So there'll be no other operations at the, any hours different than that seven to seven.
So you couldn't come in after seven just to vacuum your car and, and get out of there?
No, sir.
Is it going to be, is it going to be gated when it's closed?
We, if it is a wish of the commission, we can put chains across the entry. I just have to work with the fire department to have lock boxes for them to access. I just have to work with the fire department to have lock boxes for them to access that property in case they need into there. But we can do that, but all the equipment is shut off. There is no vacuuming. Vacuum hoses are removed. They are taken in each night, so there is nothing out there to operate after the closing time.
So when you erect this eight-foot wall, is that going to create a gap between those, that residence behind there with the one house with the brick wall and then the other two houses with the chain-linked fence? Is that going to create one of those no-man lands where paper trash, it can become a collector alley in a sense?
I understand. The best I can do is do an offset footing and put our wall right on our property line. I don't know where their wall's actually located on their property, if it's right on the property line or if it's off. The best I can do is do an offset footing, put my wall right on the property line, so I'm up to a zero line right there. If their fence, if their fence is built inside, I don't-
You're going to have a gap.
Yeah, I can't control that.
Yeah. And that's my concern. We had another car wash here probably, oh, maybe a year ago off of Alta and I believe Buffalo, a Foster Day car wash where it was an old car wash that Foster Day bought and brought back to life, but one of the concerns for the neighbors there was trash coming over her wall. This was a self-serve twenty-four-hour operation, so it was the noise and it was the trash. These neighbors' concerns are what's, you know, I understand you're going to have, what, fifteen to twenty employees?
There's five to fifteen is what's expected for this facility, yes, sir. That'll be policing the grounds also.
And those are some of the concerns of the neighbors. And I know it's not required that you have a neighborhood meeting. And I do applaud the applicant who went, I believe she did go through the neighborhood.
Yes.
I don't know what those conversations were, but I would feel a little bit more comfortable if you would host a neighborhood meeting for this item. Is that something you're, can do?
I'll introduce Trandy Hester. He is the developer of Busting Suds and he is the one that visited all the neighbors, sir.
Hello, my name is Trandy Hester. I did speak with the letter you mentioned and I know that her daughter's next door. Other than those two, when we spoke, it was, we originally thought it was going to be a self-serve. And of course you get the loitering and the noise. And after talking to her, we did let her know that it was just, it was going to be a full-size car wash, full service, and it's going to be constantly monitored with staff and management around. So we wouldn't have any of those problems as far as with the cleaning or loitering, excessive noise levels, anything like that. Yeah, she did mention to me that she did, she stayed there since nineteen forty-seven, I believe that's what she said. And so as far as being owner, as far as being owner and working there every day, I make it, make sure that we wouldn't have any of those problems that she was concerned about as far as noise levels because I do understand that I do have neighbors directly behind me. And I did make an effort to go around the whole neighborhood and speak with everybody over there and pretty much, I didn't, I got nothing but supporting and love for everybody. Those two were the only, like, concerned neighbors that I did get, the whole neighborhood.
Yeah, because you're changing their lifestyle. Here's a person that normally could sit on their balcony and enjoy the nice upwards of ten million dollar improvements along the Martin Luther King thoroughfare. Here's a lady that has to go out in the backyard now and have a six-foot fence, but now she's going to walk out and it's going to be eight fence, it's going to be eight feet. And she's going to feel like she's walled in in her backyard and that's a concern. That's a concern to me as well as the neighbors and what they, you know, these are these people's lifetime investments. And so it's very concerning to me. I see also a budding up here where you have a self-service vacuum parking canopy. So you're going to have an eight-foot fence, you're going to have a canopy on the other side, you're going to have all these things going on and they're butting a residential development, so it is a concern. I would like for you to go back and host a neighborhood meeting. Sometimes it's a little different than going door-to-door. You can utilize the West Las Vegas Library, which is right around the corner. There's the Westland Shopping Center that's there with Mr. John Edmonds that can allow you some space. But I'd like to see you have a neighborhood meeting, mail those folks on N Street and the surrounding areas and show them exactly what you're doing.
Okay.
Because what it tells me is when I don't see a lot of opposition and then I go in the neighborhood and start knocking on doors and I start hearing things, that tells me that the people heard what you said, but they really didn't understand what you said. And when they look at it in detail, then they have some, they have some concern. Madam Clerk, can I put these two oppositions on the record too as well? Thank you very much. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman. I'll let the rest of the commission-
Anybody else have any thoughts on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. One thing you might do is take a look, I think you're looking at putting a six-foot fence. Staff wanted you to put an eight-foot fence. Maybe you can figure that out before the next meeting that comes up, see if staff would have a problem with six-foot, if that's what the neighboring property really wants. But I think ultimately that Martin Luther King corridor, everything that fronts on it's going to end up being commercial one day. And the landscape that you have is fairly intense along that back, that back property line, so I'm not sure really what we can do in the future to protect those homeowners against other commercial coming in there.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that, Commissioner, that, but what I heard from the neighbors is, if you look at the, you know, you talk about compatible uses up and down that corridor, there are commercial uses, there are small strip malls. They're looking for sort of like the office, eight to five, Monday through Friday, you know, also on the weekends with limited uses. But a car wash, I understand this is commercial, I understand the frontage, but a car wash compared to the other uses on there is much more intense than what you see. Typically along that corridor, you see your beauty shops, your barber shops, your small mom and pop restaurants and things like that. Nothing is tense as a car wash. So you're cutting new ground and I think if you just talk with the neighbors, I think you guys could probably come out to a workable solution.
And one more comment, if I may. And I agree with Commissioner Goines in regards to the noise because even though the vacuums are not going to be putting off that much noise, the radios, and that's typically where you'd see a lot of the noise coming in place, people cranking up the radios and you'll have staff on hand all the time. You're really going to have to watch that and have your staff managing those people so they're not creating disturbances for the neighbors. So I do understand that.
And I can tell you for a fact, I have a neighbor lives next door to me and they have one of those in-home vacuum systems where you just plug the hose in and vacuum. And every time they turn it on, I can hear that motor in their garage and you can hear it.
Very good. I think we're, no other comments?
I'm Jeffrey Anderson. I represent JGM Holding, the owner. This has been a vacant property, which is an eyesore. There's a lot of election signs up there. There are, it's just trash all the time. It's been on the market for years. It'll probably stay on the market for years along with everything else. The one person that expressed the fact that they have a two-story home and they have a patio so that they can have a beautiful view, they have a beautiful view of the whole valley. A beautiful view looking down at a brand-new sidewalk and new asphalt on a street, to me, is not ruining my beautiful view from my two-story balcony. The other people, the other two homes, they're one-story, has a six-foot fence versus an eight-foot fence. I don't think this is imprisoning anybody. I think it's enhancing the area. It's definitely eliminating clutter from their backyard. Like he said, he went around to everybody else. He did not, which he should have, have signed by everybody that they approved it. We had one person that said they did not want approval of it. And the other person that was in denial does not even live close to the area. She is streets, she's a half a block away. And it's because it's her mother and she's saying, no, my mom doesn't want it. So basically, it's one opposition. It's not multiple oppositions. It's going to be an enhancement to the community. This is a redevelopment area for Las Vegas. We are in a recession. We are trying to create jobs. This is going to create a lot of work for a lot of people to construct this. This is going to create jobs for the community that live in there. Five to fifteen people are going to have full-time jobs or even more because they're not going to be working five days a week. So it's going to probably create twenty more jobs for a redevelopment area that we're trying to get rid of trash and ugly vacant land on a busy street and make something out of it. I don't see what the opposition of one person-
Those are persuasive points that maybe might be of significance to the neighbors, but I think the public here, input session has been closed, if I'm not mistaken. So I thank you for your thoughts. I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to hold this item for thirty days. Mr. Rankin, I think that'll be December thirteenth, if I'm correct?
That is correct.
These three items?
And we'll host a neighborhood meeting in between that time.
Is that something you would like to be at, sir?
I would like to be invited. That's correct.
I'll definitely make sure.
Commissioner Goines, that'd be twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion's been made to hold these items for thirty days. Motion's made, please cast your vote. We now move to item number thirty, special use permit forty-three, two eighty-eight. The applicant is AT&amp;T Mobility. The owner is NP Santa Fe LLC for possible action on a request for special use permit for a proposed twenty, thirty-two-foot-tall wireless communication facility, non-stealth design on top of an existing thirty, fifty-one-foot-tall building at forty-nine oh one North Rancho Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed non-stealth wireless facility is to be placed on the rooftop of a casino hotel garage. The facility will have a limited view from the public right-of-way and won't impact the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note that there has been additional letters of support and protest that came in late.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Sir?
Chris Ingle, ten four two seven Gunpowder Falls, representing the applicant, AT&amp;T. This is a request to extend one of the existing lights on top of the Santa Fe Casino, ten feet, and to add a cell array and associated ground equipment. Staff has recommended approval. We concur with all conditions and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I think this is the ideal place for one of these things.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioner for staff and possible motion.
Seeing no discussion, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. That would be to follow staff's recommendation for approval with conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. You betcha, about three times. All right. Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Item number thirty-one is special use permit forty-three, three forty-seven. The applicant is BJC Enterprises LLC, owner is F A E C Holdings, where Rula LLC, for possible action or request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on and off-sale establishment in conjunction with a proposed one thousand two hundred and fifty-five square foot restaurant at four fifty Fremont Street, Suite one twenty-three. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant originally applied for a beer wine cooler on-off sale establishment. However, they have revised their justification letter and are now just requesting the on-sale only. The off-sale has been deleted from the request. This site was, previously housed a similar use and staff finds that it can be conducted in a manner that's compatible and harmonious with the surrounding use and staff recommends approval. Please note, we did receive additional protest after publication.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, three thousand five West Horizon Ridge Parkway here on behalf of the applicant. We do understand and concur with staff's recommendations and ask that you follow them for approval.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioner for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see this coming. I'm glad you took the off-sale off and leave the on-sale. So with that, I'll move to follow staff's recommendations for approval, subject to all staff's condition.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the December seventh city council meeting. Thank you.
Item number thirty-two is special use permit forty-three, three fifty-four. The applicant is Nuvo Recycling. The owner is Nevada Space Inc. For possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed twenty-three thousand three hundred square foot salvage or reclamation of products outdoor used with an existing six-foot-tall chain-linked fence with barbed wire along the rear property line at twenty-eight sixty-six South Highland Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, a special use permit is required for this use as the applicant is not meeting the minimum requirements for a conditional use. The applicant has requested no evergreen trees for the screening of the use and to allow the barbed wire along portions of the front and rear property line. Staff supports the applicant's request for the waiver of these requirements as the proposed use is located more than five hundred feet from the property line and out of view from the public right-of-way. And there are also additional public safety and security concerns regarding the placement of evergreen trees adjacent to the railroad. Staff does recommend approval of this request. Please note, we have received additional protest and letters of support since publication.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
I'm Patty Belova, Belova Engineering, sixty-one thirty Elton Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant. We agree with all staff conditions and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Did, did you say barbed wire along portions of the front and rear?
That is correct. There is barbed wire located along the front area. It's not next to the public right-of-way, but as this property sits five hundred feet back from Highland Drive, but it's along the, their gate section of this commercial subdivision.
Okay. Public hearing's open. Anyone wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. And I don't like the barbed wire fence and I certainly don't like the concentrina wire on the top. I know that along the railroad, I know that a lot of properties have that concentration wire, but that doesn't make it right.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. I'd like to know where along the front it's going to be located because it's not shown. That would be on Highland Avenue?
The property is located on a parcel.
Ma'am, those two microphones are working in the middle, so you can stand right there comfortably. You're welcome.
Okay.
This is Highland Drive along here. This is the railroad. This is the front of the property. The barbed wire would actually be located along this section here and along a portion of this section here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Why wouldn't we, I want to understand why we aren't interested in having pine trees or any kind of landscaping along the, what is not one of the prettiest corridors, but doesn't mean we should give up on the area, is what I'm concerned. Staff could kind of-
Mr. Chairman, through you, maybe if I could address that. This is a little bit distinct in that it is a commercial subdivision. Certainly, we would like to see some type of landscaping along the front property line, but noting that this is, again, a commercial- but noting that this is, again, a commercial subdivision, their front property line is approximately five hundred feet in from Highland Drive. With commercial subdivisions, typically, we don't require landscape buffers within the commercial subdivision itself between the different parcels. But again, taking into consideration the specific nature of this property and where it's located and the use of the property, again, we would like to see trees out on the street, but interior, I don't think it's as crucial.
Okay. The other question is, we're, again, we're along the rail corridor, and we seem to think that's the most appropriate place for barbed wire and constantina. We allow more waivers. Apparently, historically, we've been stuck requesting more waivers for, for what's a better term? You can call it recycling, junkyard, you know, it's whatever, want to do it. But I just don't see, this backs up, you know, there's commercial properties on the other side of the tracks. It's somewhat visible from, you know, the resort corridor down there, and I'm just not in favor of adding more barbed wire, constantina wire along this corridor. I think we should find a better way to deal with a homeless issue than, you know, bigger wire fences and, you know, but so, I can't support that. For that reason, I can't support the item.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask the applicant, what is the reason for the barbed wire? Nothing's operating here currently, is it?
No, the building's vacant.
So what's your, why are you putting, what are you anticipating by putting up the barbed wire?
This is an existing fence. It's slanted. It's six-foot-tall chain-link fence, and slanted will not, we don't need to add additional barbed wire on top of the fence, the existing fence.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what are you storing outside? Is it the recyclables?
It will be recyclable materials. It will be forty-yard containers full with metal and probably bales, bale material, which will consist of plastic or paper and some non-ferrous metals. So along this part of the, I can probably show you in this picture. This is the backyard, the backyard of the operations, and this area here is dedicated for, set up for a baler and bales along the property line. And actually, that will be probably approximately six to eight feet tall. So that will obscure some of the view from any adjacent properties. The railroad right-of-way, as far as I remember, is two hundred feet at this location, and all these properties along the railroad are constructed the same way with the chain-link fence. And my client, Nuvo Recycling, is only leasing this property for the recycling center, and we haven't been talking to the landlord about doing any improvements, additional improvements, whether it's landscaping or additional walls. So we'd like to keep it the way it is right now.
I'm looking at your justification letter, and you're saying that, so you're going to be storing containers on the site as well?
They'll probably have drop-off containers. That's the nature of the business when people...
Are these like the shipping containers you see on freight train, or are these the...
They're more like the public services forty-yard to twenty-yard, maybe one or two containers.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think that we're in a time now in our city where it's time to improve, and regardless of what your business is and regardless of what ward it sits in or what neighborhood it sits in, I think that when we come forward with any project, we owe it to our city to make it look better and to make it, to move forward versus to go backwards or to be complacent with what we have. Right now, so much work is less money to clean up, to make, look nicer, to whatever. I'm not in favor of, I can understand the barbed wire behind where the rail tracks are. I have a similar circumstance somewhere else in the area, but not on the other side of the property. I think that this project is, it's in a thought process, but I don't believe that where we're at to move forward. I think that we need to put more into it to make it more, I don't want to say aesthetically pleasing, but why can't a recycle place look nice, you know? And when you're saying containers, you know, if we're driving by, we're going to be seeing these big containers, and, you know, I don't know what you're talking about. Are they going to be, you know, half the size of a truck? Are they going to be twice the size of a truck? I want to improve this area, and my job is here to make sure that everything that goes forward from here looks better, not the same and not worse. You're not going to see my support on this project until you come back with, I guess what I want to say is kind of what Commissioner Truesdale was saying, which is just because it's a place for recycle, doesn't mean we need to diminish the property and its value and the tenants that could possibly be around it, and that's what we're going to lose. So I'd like you to go back to the drawing boards, in my opinion, and come back with something that just looks better and gets rid of some of the barbed wire, and even though you don't have to go out on the street and throw in some trees, you should. You know, you should want to. You know, if you want to be a good neighbor and you want to be a good person in that area, we want everything to start looking better, and I'm not going to support this item tonight. Thank you.
Could I just add something? Just in terms of visibility from the street, this is actually Highland Drive. This is completely hidden behind buildings. There are four buildings in front of this.
I understand that, but you have three neighbors that have to look at it, and then you have three neighbors that might one day want to re-rent it or resell it, and they're going to say, well, heck, I don't want to live next to that guy, or I'm not going to buy that building, or, you know, we're in the same situation, my own personal family. We want our building to look really nice so that somebody wants to buy it someday. We're not going to let it go downhill. We want to make things go uphill, and that's how our city is going to grow. If everything becomes complacent, nobody's going to want to be around you, and so the rest of those buildings are going to go vacant, and we're going to see the trickling down. I just can't approve this until it looks better, and I know I'm not saying the right words because I'm not the big genius up here, but I understand what I mean, so I'm sorry.
Would it help if we included a condition that the chain-link fence is screened? Typically, screen, put a screen. Typically, I've been involved with a lot of recycling facilities in Las Vegas. Typically, what people, how people approach the situation is they, on top of the chain-link fence, they attach a green screen, which is, which prevents any, actually, it's not visible, makes it not visible from adjacent properties. And this is a typical setup for this type of facility.
Well, I don't want to keep kicking this one around, but what times are these going to be recycled? Is this going to be like nine to five? Is it twenty-four hours? Are trucks going to be coming in and out? How does this work?
No, it's just eight hours a day.
Eight hours a day?
Yeah, normal work hours. And people come in and they deliver recyclable, they're sore separated.
Right.
There's no trash or residual waste.
Okay, well, I'd like to hold it just for thirty days so that you can show me what you're talking about in, on your little board there, because you can tell me, but I don't get it. So I'd like to see it, and I think my commissioners would as well. It's a time to look better, so thank you.
Before you make the motion to hold, I'd like to just ask you to show the commissioner when she comes by, the existing chain-link fence, the existing barbed wire, and what you intend to change, if anything.
No, we're not intending to change unless we put a condition to screen it.
Okay, that's, that's the point that needs to be brought out, is it's an existing building, it's an existing parking area, it's an existing storage area, it's an existing chain-link fence. All you want to do is leave it like it is and start operating a business.
Yes.
I think that needs to be emphasized. I guess some motions in order.
My motion would be to hold it, Mr. Rankin, for thirty days to the December...
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth meeting, and with that, it would even be nice to surprise me with a little landscape.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
It carries unanimously. We, thank you. We can move to item number thirty-three, review of condition. It's forty-three, three twelve. The applicant owner is Craig Marketplace LLC. At all, for possible action on a request for review of condition to delete condition fourteen for an approved site development plan review, which required construction of a raised median island at the shared access driveway to the site from Craig Road at seventy-eight eighty-three West Craig Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant proposes to remove this condition. However, Public Works has requested that we amend the condition to allow the delay of the construction of the median until one year after all certificates of occupancy have been obtained for the site. That'll give Public Works enough time to evaluate whether the median is actually needed or not, and they'll decide at that time whether or not they need to construct it.
Thank you.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We have one protest and one support after, after the publication.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening. Julia Isolo, Locksaw Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We agree with all of the staff recommendations, and I'm here to answer any questions, and we would like to request your approval on this item.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. First question I get, what we see on the screen here are three curb-like islands. Is that what we're talking about, removing?
Correct. They've actually already been constructed, but the owner would like to remove them and assuming this item is approved. And one of the conditions was for Public Works to come back when the project is completed and to see if it warrants those needing to be there, and the applicant would be required to post a bond at this time. In case that they are warranted to be there at the end of the project, then they would construct them again.
You said the end of the project. When, do we have an estimated time that it would be completed?
I'm sorry, I don't know when they plan on completing this project, but I do believe it is under construction now, and I believe the condition from Public Works was one year after the completion of the project, which would give them enough time to study, you know, the traffic generation rates from the project.
It sounds like one of those deals where they used to do on the strip years ago, where they'd leave one window unclosed for years, and then the project was never finished, so we don't have to start the clock on the, is that what we've got going here?
I don't think so. I don't think that that is the applicant's intent. They do intend on completing this project, which is why they don't want this median island here, because they feel that it's actually going to hurt their project, and it also can create some unsafe traffic movements by doing illegal U-turns to get to the other side, and so they would prefer to be able to remove it.
Mr. Chairman. Public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak, go ahead.
Through you. I really don't understand why you're looking to remove these. Are you concerned with people on the northbound lane coming out of the parking lot and flipping around, going back in, or...
Yes.
Eighteen-wheelers trying to make too wide of a turn coming out of the parking lot? I couldn't understand this one.
Yeah, there's two concerns. The first concern is for vehicles coming out of this driveway right here. It's sort of a narrow drive aisle, and the concern is that if there's an SUV or a truck that they might hit the median island. And then also for vehicles coming out that need to go over here, that they would be doing unsafe U-turns right here around this median island.
So this is a median in the street, not on site?
It's in a private driveway. It's not in a public road.
But, Mr. Chairman, if this was removed, if you're in the property to the west of the drive, you could have people coming in and out of that trying to get across traffic while you've got people coming into the site, right?
If you're here?
I mean, people making illegal U-turns is not a reason to give up our standards. I mean, people should make the right turns. If we planned for everybody's illegal turns, we probably wouldn't have much of a road system here. But as people are coming in, if you're going east on Craig and you make a right-hand turn into this property, and if somebody's coming out of the fast-food restaurant back road and they're trying to go south on that road, you can have conflicts. I mean, you've got a four-way stop, potentially a four-way congestion point right as you come off the street, when people are carrying the most speed. So I don't know what would be concluded for waiting till all the buildings are occupied because, you know, uses change, leases come and go. Either this was the right decision to make when it was built, or it was never the right decision. I mean, you're a traffic engineer, you guys do great work. I know that, you know, depends on which side of the, if you're in Public Works, you want these things. If you're in the private sector, you don't want these things, but I haven't heard a lot presented tonight that makes a good argument for removing this.
Well, I think that the applicant's intent is just to hold off on it for now, not necessarily remove it permanently, but just to see if it's actually warranted when the project is completed, because right now, this, this area is not built out, and so at the moment, it's probably not needed, and they are willing to post a bond, a ten thousand dollar bond, and when the project is done, Public Works, if they find that it is needed, they'll put it back, and that's your guarantee that they'll put it back.
Why don't we leave it in, and then once that's completed, if it's not needed, then you can take it out, and then nobody'd have to post a bond. It'd be, it's probably an appropriate solution. I mean, these are, these were two different owners. There were a lot of issues in the site planning of both these sites. There's flood issues, that's why this curb has got some breaks in it, and it's a major, this drive is very close to a major on-ramp of the ninety-five. I think it's one of those things, we should wait till it's developed before we talk about taking it out and not take it out and then wait for it, because it's already there. Why waste those dollars?
Right. Well, the two owners are actually both in agreeance with this. They both put up money for this application. This is something that they both want.
So that tells me they're probably going to come in and want to change the configuration of that pad building that isn't built out and change their drives a little bit.
That I don't know, but, you know, if they did, it would be a public hearing.
I suspect, why should we do that? Why should we do that? Why should we get into that mess right now? It functions very well. You've got good tenants going in, you've got businesses going in there. I just don't see the the urgency to tear this out today or for us to approve it. I I just, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I agree with Commissioner Truesdale. It seems like we're doing this backwards. I think the idea is probably just to leave it in place, see what happens over the next year. And I agree with with Commissioner Truesdale. You won't have to post the bond, you won't have to tear it out, and it's a better solution. If after a year, you're finding that the SUVs and large vehicles are cutting across it, then come back and then we'll look at it. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion on this one.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to deny item thirty-three ROC four-three-three-one-two.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post? Motion denied is carried. We now move to item number thirty-four, Site Development Review.
Chairman, if I might, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Item number thirty-four, Site Development Review forty-two nine eighty-seven. The applicant is C.I.M.P.O.P. Las Vegas LLC.
Mr. Chairman, it's thirty-five. That one was a babe.
Oh, didn't get it marked off. Very good. Moving right ahead to item number thirty-five, Site Development Review thirty-two forty-two two forty-seven. The applicant owner is Jim Marsh, American Corporation. For possible action on a site, want a request for a site development plan review for a waiver to allow an electronic reader board on existing twenty-four-foot-tall freestanding sign at eighty-five fifty-five West Centennial Parkway. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this proposal is not consistent with the Town Center Development Standards, and then a waiver is needed in order to allow the reader board sign, where such signs are specifically prohibited. The proposal also does not meet Policy two-point-four-point-eight of the twenty-twenty Master Plan, which requires the city to improve the quality and appearance of signage through the consistent application of its sign code. As such, staff recommends denial of this application. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you. Public hearing is is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
My name is Ron Hill. I'm here representing Jim Marsh.
Thank you. Go ahead.
There are several reasons why Jim would like to actually have an electronic message unit. It's an existing double-faced pylon sign that he has up currently right here. And what he'd like to do is to remove the faces and use the existing frame that's there. There won't be any modification to the height of the sign or to the width of the sign or to the setback of the sign. All that would remain the same. His name would be up top. Jim Marsh would be a permanent part of the display. It would not be part of the electronic message center. That means that eight foot six by eight foot six of the sign would be an LED rearboard similar to that that Ed Bozar has down the street on the ninety-five and Anne Road, which is one of his competitors. Now, one of the things, too, that Jim Marsh has asked to have this board is he really feels that will help business in the area. And he also has offered to give one-third of the time of this message unit to the community service, such entities as the Boys Club, the Boy Scouts of America, the Hockey Club, art shows, homeowners meetings, blood drives, Centennial High School events, and Southern Nevada Garden Railroad. So he'd like to make it part of the community project also by donating a third of the time towards that. Like I said, the board is eight foot six by eight foot six. It's not very big, nothing compared to the Bozar sign that sits over there on Anne Road, which is about probably four times the size of this display. It's a high-definition display, which means it's not like a light bulb display. This is a very high-definition unit. As you can see, he supports our troops with the flag, the high school, and of course, he would advertise his own stuff on it. He he did want me to express that there was a lot of things that never went through in that area, such as walkways and some things like that, and felt that this type of display would maybe help bring some more business back to that area. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I'd like to now open it up to the public input. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farley, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I really like these LED signs. I really do. With one cravat, and that is that they don't have that strobe like like two or three times a second. That that is really irritating. But as far as the the reader boards, I really like them. The other thing is, if he's going to advertise, he ought to be advertising. If he still owns it, that Lonnegrin's out there at Amagosa Valley, because that place is really nice.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. Here you might get some questions.
Sure.
Todd?
I'll just make the comment that I don't see that this is incompatible. As I look at the existing sign and then envision in its place a digital sign, you know, you're going to have some advertising on there, one-third of which will be, you know, changing up to provide a a community service. It's going to be the same size. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Marsh is trying to, you know, boost his business and this economy, but I'm looking at it from a land use standpoint, and I like it. And so you're going to see my support on this.
Thank you. As long as the Boy Scouts don't dominate the signage. Okay. Any other comments? I guess we're ready for a motion then, sir.
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion on item thirty-five SDR four-three-two-four-seven, which is for approval subject to all conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. And it's not a, it's not a flashing type sign at all. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Okay, and then we can file for permit after the ten days? Thank you very much.
We now move to item number thirty-six, which is Site Development Review thirty-four two ninety. The applicant owner is Chilo LLC. For possible action, a request for a site development plan review for conversion of an existing thirteen-foot-tall, one thousand seven square foot, single-story residence to an office with a waiver to allow a six-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west perimeter at thirty-six oh seven and thirty-six fifteen West Charleston Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is to convert a legally not conforming residence into an office building or office use. Staff recommends approval of the waiver that, for the reduced landscape, six feet from fifteen feet, all part, all street trees will be located within this reduced buffer area. Staff recommends approval of the parking lot tree exception due to the small size of the lot and the fact that they can't put in all the required trees due to the size of the lot. The building will remain residential in nature, and additional landscaping and iron fencing will be added to the front and side property lines to enhance the visual appeal of the property. The proposal will bring this property into conformance with the general plan and the current zoning designation. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Mr. Chair, there has been two support letters since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Caleb Brooks. I'm the manager of Chilo, which is simply my wife and I who purchased the building for her practice. She's currently a psychiatrist at the Ross and Neal State Facility and teaches residents, psychiatric residents at UMC. This building is for use as her private practice one day a week and then occasionally in afternoons. We have, since purchasing the building in July, I think it was vacant since ninety-six. So we purchased it with hopes to create a very beautiful office on Charleston there. We've worked extensively with building and with planning, met with Councilwoman Tarkanian. We've done everything that we could legally do without a permit to this point. We are now hoping that not only we get approval today, but that it is final action. In the interim of this whole process, my, the current location where my wife has her private practice is being foreclosed on. She was subletting, so she is now having to be out of there on November thirtieth. So we're hoping that, like I said, it's final approval, and we can pull permits on the eighteenth, get the paving done, get everything done, get occupancy permit.
Public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you. Todd Farley, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Could we go to the the photos of the of the existing building, please? My problem is, is this, is the heat sink effect. We need some trees and stuff in there. I mean, that, and that's the deal. I mean, we, he says he's going to do the paving first. I think the first thing he ought to do is plant the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone. Ma'am?
Tiffany Hesser, eleven oh nine Melville. I am the property owner and resident directly south of here. While I'm pleased to see landscaping coming in, and it definitely looks like some improvements there, I have real concerns about the parking on these sites. I I have a lot of challenges with parking from the doctor's office that is on the other side of Melville. People park in my driveway. People constantly sit in front of my house waiting for folks that are in the doctor's office. Cigarette butts, coffee cups, fast food garbage. Like I said, I've had people in my driveway run over my sprinklers. You know, I'm looking at this design, and they've, they're looking at consolidating the two lots, but they don't look the same. How are folks going to know to park behind that other business?
If I may, we are, the the, sorry, the paving permit, what we would be doing is, in addition to adding the one, two, three, five spots that that are on this plan, we would be skimcoating the entire, both properties. So it is all of one piece and relining, adding, and I'm sorry, it doesn't show on this one. This is a previous version, but I worked with the planning commission. And so there would, the whole parking lot would be relined.
Right. Is there going to be some sort of signage so folks know to park there instead of in front, my front yard? And without the trees in the parking lot, if you go back to the photos, you'll see that I have apparently very attractive shade trees that people like to park under in the summer. And I really think that with the fencing going around Melville and Charleston, folks are going to drive down Melville, park in front of my house even more than they already do, and go through that alley entrance by foot.
We.
Thank you. I I think we need, you know, ask the questions to me and you answer the questions to me. And otherwise, you two are just, maybe we'll go outside and have a conversation, come back.
Yeah. I I I do know what you're talking about. I do see the cars parked there for the the doctor's office across the street. What I would say is my my wife's practice is a one-patient-at-a-time, thirty minutes to fifty minutes. You know, she does not do short visits, so it's not a a high-traffic thing. Our current website, we give very specific directions to where she is. Now, we will do the same. Each and every patient, there's no walk-in traffic, is told where to go, and we will absolutely tell them to park. The the sidewalk from the the area between the two buildings is intended to be our main entrance. We've we've created a very nice winding sidewalk that we're going to landscape beautifully. We will tell everyone that is our main entrance. That is the ADA ramp entrance. So that is, as I said, the planned main entrance, and we will be respectful of that and do our best to let every patient.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and.
I did have just one other comment besides the parking, just the colors, since I will be looking at this out of two of my windows.
What color do you have? It's Pepto-Bismol pink or what? What color are you going to paint it? You have a color.
I like what I see so far.
Show those to Mr. Truesdale.
Yes. Can't seem to find the trim color. The trim color is a Swiss chocolate brown.
And I guess I just do want to say they're doing great work out there. It looks like it's going to be a vast improvement. I just have, you know.
Thank you for coming and letting us, letting us know your position. Thank you. Anyone else in attendance seeing none, close the public hearing and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I just want to say one thing, first off, to Tiffany. Ms. Tiffany, we had the same incident on Strong in Charleston where we had a medical office building, and it was a big office building with lots of parking, and the people were parking down the street. And what what our councilwoman did was, it took a while, but we're going to put this in as a condition here tonight, is she put signs about every, I don't know, there must have been two signs on each side of the street, no parking between the hours of eight AM and and five PM. And that will be one of my conditions to ensure that nobody parks in front of your street house, because I used to drive by there and see exactly what you're talking about. They weren't even in the lot. They were in front of people's houses. That's number one. This is going to only improve and enhance this corner, and and the landscape is is beautiful and everything. My concern is that, what is my concern, Mr. Flynn?
I believe relative to final action.
Yeah, my concern is final act, is to the final action. What I'd like to do is, after my other fellow councilpeople talk here, I mean, commissioners, is I want to add the condition. Is that you to end on? Is that the sign? Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. No, Melville is the city of Las Vegas public right of way.
Okay, but I want, I want to make sure that when the building's open, the signs are in place and that there's two of them, probably spread between maybe three houses that says, no parking between the hours of, you know, eight in the morning and five in the afternoon. And it does work, because it did work on Strong. That would be one thing. My second thing is, I believe that this is all in good faith, and I think the the building itself is great. I know the corner very well, and and I think it's going to be an improvement. But I'm not comfortable making it final action until it is approved through the councilwoman's office, just in case we've missed something along the way, because I I just, I just would like to add that as a condition. Right, Flynn?
Okay.
It's not a condition? Okay. So, anyway, whatever anybody else has to say, I just wanted to throw those signs in there before I forget.
I think we're ready for a motion then.
Briefly, Commissioner, Chairman.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, you've done a great job. This building looks, you know, if you deliver on what you presented, you take something that's been an eyesore since the mid-nineties and really help it. I I understand Commissioner Quinn's comments. I, I, but I also appreciate the fact that your wife has, she's a victim in in a lot of respects with regards to a foreclosed landlord or and subtenant. And I just would hope that staff would find a way to to move this along quickly. I don't, I don't see what, with all the work you've done so far, another meeting would do. But, you know, that's really staff's issues. But I, I'd hate to see your wife, you know, wind up having to close her practice down for two weeks or three weeks while we go through the, just the clock.
Which she couldn't do. It would require moving business license, DEA license, I mean, multiple times.
And I, and I deal with business license every day, and there's a lot of these things that, they sound simple. They sound like they're, you know, the next step, but there's, there's a lot of work that goes into it. And I would hope that she, I wish there was a way that she could get it done with, only having to do it once. But I will support the motion for approval.
Okay. Then I think we're ready for a motion with those comments.
Thank you. I'm ready for a motion for approval of SDR four-three-two-nine-zero, following all of staff's recommendations, all their landscape requirements, adding the two signs to be put on Melview to ensure that there are no parking in front of the neighbors and to remind you that the councilwoman has ten days to appeal this if she sees something that I've missed. So good luck and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
There you are.
I'd like to try recommending a condition for the the parking signs.
Please.
And that would be, no parking shall be allowed on Melville Drive between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. The applicant shall work with the traffic engineer to determine the appropriate locations of two signs on Melville Drive.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
None of the head of the applicant indicates agreement. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
We can now move item number 39, which is the text amendment 43393. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is for possible action to amend the downtown centennial plan to clarify that Symphony Park District is a sub-district of the Parkway Center District, and to amend map 14 of the downtown centennial plan to include the Symphony Park District. Do we have to back up to item 38? The calendar? Do we have to take them in order?
Not necessarily.
Okay, let's do 39, we'll go back.
Just if you will announce that we're taking them out of order.
All right, we're taking this one. I just enjoy reading these things so much, I think I'll do 38 and I'll come back to 39, if everyone will endure my pleasure here. Okay, 38 is, Director's Report 43389, the applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is for possible action to approve the 2012 Planning Commission meeting schedule and revise the 2011 Planning Commission schedule. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, you have before you in your packets the proposed schedule for the Planning Commission meetings for 2012. If you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to address that. We will apologize in advance for the meeting scheduled on February the 14th, and hope that no one's spouse is angry at us for having to have the meeting on that date.
Any discussion? Does this require a public hearing? Let's do it, okay. I'd like to clear the public hearing open.
You're gonna revise to 2011, so that's next month, so what's gonna happen there?
Because of a closure of city facilities, we need to move the application closing day forward by approximately, what, three days, Mr. Rankin?
That is correct.
That is correct.
So when's the meeting?
So, the meeting remains on the same date. The January 10th meeting remains on the same date.
January?
Excuse me, the January and the February meetings remain on the same date as?
Yeah, but it says the 2011.
Correct, it's just the application closing day that gets moved.
Oh, I, I, I.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I'll make a motion for approval.
Sticking your neck out on this one. Okay, motion's been made to approve the recommendation for the meeting dates, all of, cast your She's, she is not available right now. Motion carries. Next is number 39, that's my favorite. The text amendment 43393, the applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is for possible action to amend the downtown centennial plan to clarify that Symphony Park District is a sub-district of the Parkway Center District, and to amend map 14 of the downtown centennial plan to include the Symphony Park District. Staff report, please.
An unintended consequence of adding the Symphony Park District to the downtown centennial plan, staff added is what appears to be a separate district. It is actually a sub-district of the Parkway Center Plan, and we just wanna fix that and clarify that it is part of the Parkway District, and it, all the uses therein are applicable. Staff recommends approval.
Very good. I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, I can clear the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion's been made, in regards to item 39, please cast your votes. Motion carries. Item number 40 is the text amendment 43411, the applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19.12 related to permitted uses and LVMC 19.18 related to definitions and measures by adding the term, description, definition, and requirements of the community garden use, and by allowing the use as a conditional use in all residential zoning districts and as a permitted use in all commercial zoning districts. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, community gardens promote healthy neighborhoods and provide security for, food security for low-income persons. Community gardens also function as interim uses of land that serve to utilize vacant lots until a higher and better use is developed. In an urban setting, the community gardens can serve as a component of open space network by creating sustainable uses for the space. Community gardens strengthen community bonds by creating recreational therapeutic opportunities while serving as an educational resource and promoting environmental awareness to the public. Staff is recommending approval of this. Please note, we are making an amendment to item number four of the conditional use in regarding sales. We'd like to amend number four to read as follows, sales or donations, if applicable, are limited to once per week from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. All sales must meet the minimum requirements of Title VI and all other applicable state and county requirements. Sales shall be limited to only produce grown on-site.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Are there community gardens in existence right now, and would you need a permit or some sort of approval to have a community garden, or I'm really unsure of what this is?
Well, there is a community garden currently in existence. Currently, our code doesn't allow community gardens within the city of Las Vegas, but there is one in existence that we're aware of. It's located on Tonopah, and this would assist them in legalizing their activities.
Would that require any special permit, or it's?
No, it's a conditional use on all zoning requirements. Community gardens tend to be a truly interim use. They're not the highest and best use of a land. If it's a vacant parcel and it becomes a community garden for a brief amount of time, eventually, at some point, it'll probably come to be something more than just a community garden.
Mr. Chairman, question, there's several, I know several schools that have demonstration gardens for their, does that fall into this, or would that fall into this issue?
You know, regarding demonstration gardens within schools, also community gardens that may occur within park settings, for instance, at Lorenzi Park, there is the Rose Garden, which is operated by the Las Vegas Society of Roses. Those are all part of the uses of schools and parks, so they're already permitted there as part of the use itself. This would allow it on lots that are not
Right.
zoned either civic or intended to be used as a public use.
And still, since you describe it as a potentially interim use, there are still code enforcement for maintaining properly cleaning?
Absolutely, you're still required to properly maintain the area, keep it clean, and keep it in an orderly state. You can't let it become overgrown with weeds and abandon it later on.
Tomato vines.
Mr. Chairman, quick comment. I think this is forward-thinking. With the things that are going on with the economy, I think we're going to see more and more community gardens and emphasis on community. This is a neat idea for people to come together, I think it promotes provident living and kinda takes us back to some good old days when kids could plant something and watch it grow, and I'm fully in support of this, I love this idea.
Anybody else have any comments regarding this one?
Just real quick, in regards to the Tonopah Garden, this will allow them now to do the, and I think she had some concerns about doing sort of like a farmer's market-type use where they can sell the produce from the garden right there on the site?
That is correct, we did add that. Normally, in a residential zoning, you wouldn't allow any commercial activity, but as this is just a minor item to sell the produce that's grown, and when I refer to produce, I refer to both, from what we've seen from other cities, flowers are very popular in some cities where they grow a lot of flowers and then sell them, one day a week, a limited hour, 7 to 7, in order to do a small farmer's market for the produce grown on-site.
And also, right on your intent, it mentions that these neighborhoods provide food and security for low-income persons. Don't we see these, aren't we gonna see these in other areas and not just low-income areas?
We hope. We hope to see them in lots of areas.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion on this one, with regard to item 40, text amendment 43411, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
A motion's been made, please cast your votes.
As amended.
As amended. As amended. Please cast, motion carries. We now move to item number 41, which is a text amendment 43463, the applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is for discussion and possible action to amend Title 19 to establish boundaries and standards for a supergraphic signage overlay district specific to government properties. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this is obviously not the first time that you have seen an ordinance relative to supergraphic or building wrap signage. Let me point out one of the distinctions with this, as you're aware, that we have had requests in the past for building wrap signage for commercial properties. This one is limited specifically to civic properties for units of government. Also, what is distinct about this proposal that you have before you this evening is that we are proposing as part of this text amendment that we establish a supergraphic signage overlay district, the boundaries which are shown on the map, which is on the screen in front of you, which essentially encompasses the downtown centennial plan area with minor extensions along US 95 and then further south along I-15. In terms of the actual body of the amendment and what would be allowed, again, this is limited to units of government, the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, and the state only, as proposed. It has been suggested that perhaps we need to, perhaps tighten that language, and I'll get into that in just a moment. In terms of the content of the ordinance itself, it's more or less similar to the previous proposal that you saw last year. In terms of the number of signs allowed, there has been one change to the area, it has been reduced from, I believe, 2,400 square feet is what we had in the ordinance last year, based on further research that we've done relative to any off-premise building wrap signage messages that are adjacent to the freeways, we've reduced that to 1,000 square feet. In terms of the height, it cannot extend above the roof line, cannot project beyond the walls of the building, and must be mounted a minimum of 15 feet above the ground level. In terms of orientation, it cannot face residential areas, and so that's one of the standards that we have in place, again, as we had proposed last year, to prevent impacts to residential neighborhoods. In terms of the approval process, same thing as we had proposed last year, that a master sign plan would be required, master sign plans are required to go before the planning commission for approval. At that time, you would review things such as the proposed aesthetics of the signage and how that fits with the building itself. Also, for off-premise messages, again, a special use permit would be required. There's been a number of questions that have circulated relative to this proposed ordinance, and let me go into some of those. First of all, in terms of where did this text amendment originate, this is being initiated by the city of Las Vegas. The city entered into a contract with Active Marketing to look at ways to increase its revenue stream back in 2007. In 2009, we did an RFP, looking at advertising opportunities, that was awarded to Elite Media. In addition to doing building wrap, they have other proposals that they are looking at, including advertising on either recycling bins or waste cans, looking at ways that we can also do advertising on city vehicles, et cetera. In terms of who would be allowed to do this, and where would this would be allowed, obviously, again, within the boundaries of the overlay district only, what is intended is that the units of government would have to own and operate the property. For example, there are certain situations where the city owns the property but leases it to a private business. In those situations, those individuals would not be allowed to have the building wrap. It has to be owned and occupied by the units of government identified, and so that's one of the restrictions. And what I would propose that we would amend is, in terms of the language, shall be limited to buildings that are owned, occupied, and operated by the following units of government, and that would be in subsection C of the ordinance itself. Another question that we have had is, does this impact billboards? If you'll recall, in the ordinance that we had before you last year, there was a restriction that did not allow billboards on properties that were seeking to do building wrap. We had removed that language from the ordinance that went forward to city council last year. Again, you will not find that restriction in this ordinance this year. There is not a requirement that billboards would not be permitted on parcels that have building wrap. And again, it's important to understand that billboards have their own separate regulations that are distinct from the regulations that we're proposing for building wrap, so they are considered to be two different types of signage with their own separate regulations that apply to them. Another question that we have had is, how does this impact discussions that we have with our stakeholder group for the private building wrap ordinance, which we're currently working on, in terms of the definitions of on-premise versus off-premise? One of the things to take into consideration is that, again, is this is restricted to units of government only, really, the city of Las Vegas can only advertise off-premise messages or off-premise sponsors. And so, again, what we are interested in is doing off-premise advertising, that does require us to go through the MSP and the special use permit process in order to do that. Another question has been raised relative to content issues, and again, that's one of the major issues that has surfaced relative to building wrap. In terms of this ordinance itself, the city obviously does not have the ability to regulate content within its zoning regulations. However, in its private contract that the city has with Elite Marketing, we are able to make general categorical exclusions in terms of items that could be advertised on city facilities. Just to give you an example of that, the Regional Transportation Commission, in terms of the advertising that it has, both at its bus stops and on its buses, has, in its advertising contract, I believe, nine separate categories that are not permitted to be advertised, and so the city would follow suit and do something very similar to that. Obviously, the city manager's office, the city council would not like to see items advertised that would be inappropriate with city facilities. So that is essentially a summary of many of the questions that I've heard as this has gone forward. Again, one of the things to remember about this is, this is only for the units of government. We do have a separate stakeholder group, which is in the process of considering regulations for building wrap on private buildings, and that's something that's going to follow its own track, and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point in time.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. If you're thinking about wrapping that new 10-story thing on Rancho, I'm against that. I mean, if you wanna do it for public advertising, that's fine, but for commercial stuff, no. We're not that desperate for money.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Steve Spahn, 8:30, Park the Sale. I just wanna say that I think this would be a great idea to add to the Arch District downtown. You have a lot of building owners down there that are struggling in, obviously, the revenue. Everybody's looking for added revenue, but I think it might be an interesting thing to look in that district also. Thanks.
This is the government buildings we're addressing now.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just bringing it up.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
So we have a lot of people in the back there, a lot of full employment for the community here. Come on down, let's hear your point of view.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road. It's nice to be with you until 8:15 at night and be the last item on the agenda, it reminds me of the good old days when we used to get done at midnight instead. So, tonight I am before you representing Lamar Outdoor Advertising. For years, either through my firm or myself, we have represented Lamar in numerous battles For years, either through my firm or myself, we have represented Lamar in numerous battles with, I would probably say, every local government jurisdiction relating to where billboards can be, how big they can be, how tall they can be. If the sound walls are going up now, we've battled over whether or not the height of our billboards can get over the top of the sound walls. Every conceivable battle that you can think of as it relates to off-premise advertising, we have fought, and we have agreed, as we've worked through every jurisdiction in the city in particular, to abide by certain sets of rules. Where you can put billboards, where you can't, how big they can be. We do have size limitations, we have height limitations, and we have location limitations. The location limitations are driven by separation between other billboards, as well as an exclusionary zone on just where you can put them and where you can't. Obviously, the majority of them are oriented towards the freeway, but there have been some that have been placed on Sahara and other streets like that over the years. Virtually, it is very difficult, I won't say impossible, but it is very difficult to find an available location for a billboard in today's environment, and I'll speak just mostly to the city of Las Vegas, but that's true in other jurisdictions as well. So, and I appreciate the way that Flynn described this ordinance. He's right. This is a different animal, and I'm comparing apples to oranges in some way, but I think I'm comparing apples to apples as it relates to the off-premise nature of this ordinance. This ordinance is absolutely the opposite of what off-premise is to billboards. It encourages no size limitations. It basically says, the bigger the better. Now, if you're facing a freeway, there is a distinction that's actually required by NDOT, that you can only have a maximum square footage, but if you're not facing a freeway and you're on a government-owned building, bigger is better. Ten-story buildings, there's the height. Billboards are limited to a height. Even if we have to get over to a sound wall, we're still limited at a height cap. You have ten-story buildings. Those are hundred-foot-tall buildings, and then add on the width. These are massive, massive signs that can go on the face of government buildings. And the third point, where we have the distance separations, there are no distance separations between supergraphics. So granted, you don't have numerous government buildings maybe lined up right next to each other, but you also don't have the size, the distance separations that billboards do amongst each other. You can just put them on if they're actually on a governmental building. So for those reasons, we stand before you tonight opposing this ordinance in its entirety. I will say this and leave you with just these comments. We believe that this ordinance opens the door to three issues that we want you to consider. With all due respect, we believe that this ordinance allows the government to get around rules that it applies to the private sector. If it is allowed on government buildings, it is a very short leap to allow this type of use on private buildings, and in that regard, content cannot be regulated at all. And the third point is that it's a policy decision that I recognize that this commission and the city council has to make on whether or not they believe supergraphic signs within the city on your downtown cityscape is appropriate, but it forever changes the look of the city forever. And just to give you an idea, if you can look at the overhead, this has actually taken a picture here in Las Vegas. It's not in the county, but I wanted to give you an idea of just the sheer size differences between supergraphics and billboards. This was on Paradise. It, I'll say this, controversial, I'm not entirely sure. It's definitely not an on-premise sign, and it certainly wasn't allowed to be an off-premise sign, but nonetheless, it was built. The size of a billboard is right next to it, and this is the supergraphic. That changes the look of your downtown, and even if it's restricted to government buildings now, again, I believe, as all of our good advocates are in this room tonight, that it's a short leap to allow them on private buildings too. And even if it's in with just a certain boundary, even if it's just the downtown core, it forever changes the look. So with that, I appreciate your comments again. Flynn, no disrespect to any of my comments or my opposition to this ordinance, but Lamar cannot support it.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Russell Rowe with Law Firm of Griffin Row and Ave, ten-one-hundred West Charleston Boulevard, here on behalf of Boyd Gaming Corporation. I've spoken to you before, the previous ordinances that, that came up regarding building wraps, and obviously, as Flynn has explained, this is, this is a different animal. The previous ordinances were geared towards private enterprise, and Boyd Gaming's concerns with those ordinances dealt with proliferation and the character of downtown, and what were we going to turn downtown into if we're going to allow building wraps, particularly off-premise wraps where we open up Pandora's Box. This ordinance clearly is more restricted only to governmental, governmentally-owned properties and occupied buildings. We have asked for an identification of where exactly those buildings are, how many are there, but we, we submit and probably expect that it's relatively limited, so we understand that, or perhaps not. Some may be shaking their head, perhaps not. But there's still a concern about, Boyd's concern really is about where we're heading with all of this. We've frankly are battle weary with this issue. It's been going on for about three years, maybe four years now, it seems, a number of different iterations, and as Ms. Lazovich said, it's a very short leap to, to going off-premise for public entities to off-premise for private entities, and we are in a totally different world. And that's a concern we have, and we understand it's not, that is not necessarily before you, but it kind of is. And we would ask that you, you think, you give a lot of thought to that as to where we're going, going to go. We understand there's a revenue need here, but you know, there's always a revenue need for government, and you know, if you need more money, go buy another ten-story building because we can make a couple million a year off of it. Let's build all our buildings with glass because we can wrap them really easy and make more money, and I'm not sure that's the direction we want to go. I should say Boyd Gaming's not sure that's the direction we ought to go as a community in downtown. All that we've done down, down here, and all that you and the city have done over the years to get us to where we're at, we need to be careful where we go because we all seem to believe we're on the precipice of doing something really great downtown and changing this for the better for a very long time. So it asks you, you think, give a lot of thought to that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. Rod Carter with Clear Channel Outdoor. Just going to concur with Ms. Lazovich's comments. Again, no respect to Director Flynn for all the hard work that he's put into this, but in general, we are against this ordinance moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman and Commissioners. Todd Kessler, two oh six North Third Street. On behalf of various stakeholders in downtown, I've been part of this process for three or four years as one of the stakeholders that have been discussed here as it relates to us continuing to try and work with the city and other stakeholders downtown to come up with a ordinance that meets everybody's needs. This ordinance is one that was kind of a surprise to many of the stakeholders as it relates to where we were going. And from our perspective, we share a lot of things with Ms. Lazovich. We're not opposed to it, though. We're not, we're a proponent of it, not an opponent of, of building wrap signs. However, the blur between what the private sector can do and what the public sector can do is, seems to be a little bit more geared to, in favor of the public sector. And from our perspective, we're working diligently, we've been working diligently for years from the stakeholders' perspective to try and resolve some of the issues. We would request that this item be tabled so that if we do come forward with an ordinance, that it both meets both the private and the public sectors' needs and requirements, and therefore can have a balance and can treat both of those entities or, or interests fairly. We believe that this ordinance, based on where we were before, we don't have an ordinance yet from the stakeholders' perspective, but where it was before compared to this one gives quite an advantage to the city's perspective. With that being said, I know it's late, I'm, that's about all I have to say, so thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Bill Curran with the Ballard Spaire Law Firm, one hundred City Parkway here in Las Vegas. With me tonight is my client, Chad McCullough from Elite Media. As you heard, the city has been involved in this for some time. They went through a procurement process after they had received the input from their consultants about ways to raise new revenue. They went through a procurement process. My client was selected as having submitted the best proposal. That was done several months ago. We've been sort of standing by, waiting until this part of the puzzle gets worked out so that we can go forward. I'm going to let Mr. McCullough address a couple of things, but first thing that needs to be understood, I think, to put this into proper context, is that this is not something unique and novel to Las Vegas. In fact, building wraps and supergraphics are something that exists in a number of jurisdictions across the U.S., in Asia, where I was not too long ago, in Europe, where I was recently, and I believe they're even in South America. This is not something novel here. In fact, Mr. McCullough, who has resided here for the last eight or nine years, has been in business here, he's going to show you some photos of supergraphics in other communities that he's been involved in the installation of, and some photos of ones that he's done here in Las Vegas. I think they'll give you an idea of what we're talking about. I can understand why the city sees this as a revenue source at a time when there is such need for new revenue sources, and, you know, I guess anytime something is proposed that is different, change is always somewhat threatening. On the other hand, let me just say, this is something that is being done, I think, in the top, at least in the top ten markets in the U.S., in New York, in L.A., in Orlando, in Miami, in Chicago, in New Orleans, other places that Mr. McCullough can probably identify, but this is not like some big terrible thing that somebody came up with the craziest idea and let's try it in Las Vegas because anything goes here. This is, this is the new reality. I've seen it in China, I've seen it in Europe. I'm going to let Mr. McCullough tell you a little bit about his business and answer questions.
Chad McCullough, Elite Media. I guess the biggest takeaway from this is that this was an open bid process. The applicant for this is the city of Las Vegas. It is our intention to help the city drive revenues with existing assets. I think what we're looking to do is place the cleanest and the classiest ads possible with blue-chip advertisers, and like they did say, it, I believe that bigger is better, and I think that'll help us over the course of this contract, depending on the amount of inventory that is allowed, to drive upwards of millions of dollars over the course of this time. So I'd just like to show you what we've done in the past with taking existing inventory like we're going to use with the civic assets and bringing additional dollars to the city. So here's, like Bill was saying, in the city of Phoenix for the NBA All-Star Game, you know, bringing, bringing big events to, to our city and really helping promote and helping show producers and other exhibitors who are looking to, to make a splash here in town. In Orlando, and again, there was no, no expense to the city. We literally used the, the building facades and drove some large dollars for, for these, for these ads. So it just passed through, and some of these you may recognize here in Las Vegas.
This one is significant because it shows the advertising on the monorail, which I think has a similar procedure as the RTC.
Right. And it's, it's my belief that the, the city will have the last right of refusal on any of the content, so I don't think that that'll be an issue since we have an outside private contract with the city. Some other, some other looks here.
Mr. McCullough, not to, not to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I think you get the idea.
One question, because I, I do understand the fact that you, you're bringing forward a perspective of the city's idea of this revenue.
Right.
And the fact that you have a contract with the city.
Right.
What I'd like to understand, and one of the big questions that Flynn didn't bring up, was the county owns a significant number of buildings, or assets in the downtown, as you refer to them, and the state, they don't have the same contract. So why, while you may be very concerned about your contract with the city, the county, when you, when you look at how they make decisions, and I'm not, I'm not here to, to say the county doesn't make good decisions, but sometimes their best and last decision logic isn't what's best for the city of Las Vegas, it's the best, it's what's best for seven commissioners in the county. So while we may pass this in good faith, or not, whatever this counsel, what, how do we get to the point where, as a citizen or as a, as a commissioner, I have the understanding that if you keep your word and you keep your commitment, we may do all the right things and approve a special use permit for the Justice Center or the jails, or, excuse me, the detention centers, or Las Vegas Academy? All of these buildings that could be potentially covered in supergraphics, the county may abdicate that to a third party, somebody less committed to the community, somebody that offers more money, and suddenly, or if this doesn't generate the right economic return, everybody goes, well, shoot, that wasn't as good as we thought it, so we'll bulk sale these to a, even another third-party advertiser once the entitlement's in place. Tell me how we get from, as a city, get from here to there when we can't regulate content? Once this, once this is approved, we can't even tell you how long it stays up.
Mr. Chairman, it might be more appropriate if I answer that question rather than represent a district from Elite Media.
Can we hold that question for a second and let me play bureaucrat for a while and conclude the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then turn over the planning commissioners for discussion.
He was right at the point where I wanted to get, I thought.
I know you were right where you wanted to, to ask the hard question.
No, no.
Go ahead and complete your presentation, but I would be interested in having you show us public buildings that you've wrapped, particularly locally.
No, no public buildings.
None of them. Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Yeah, today.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Oh, sure. I mean, that pretty much, that's pretty much sounds enough.
Okay, we've seen, we've seen the wraps. We live here, too.
Right.
The one point I want to make, though, is understand, we've heard from people who are concerned about the fact that this only takes care of the piece that relates to government buildings and that private, privately-owned buildings should also be considered. We're cognizant of that, we're supportive of the idea. I mean, Mr. McCullough is in the sign business, and the more opportunities he has to place signs, I guess the better it is for him, but the point that we understand, and is written in your documents tonight, is that this is a first piece and that there's going to be a subsequent piece coming forward dealing with the private sector. There's going to be some slightly different considerations that I know staff is working on. I know it's complicated. If it was simple, it'd have been done long ago, but this is the easier piece, and that's why this is here first, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll defer to...
Let me, let me do it right. Okay, is there anyone else in attendance wants to provide any input during the public input session? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the commissioners for discussion, and now I'll defer to Commissioner Truesdale to, to prompt an answer on his very valid question, if you remember this.
Well, I think it's, it's, if we're just... Well, I think it's, if we're just looking tonight at the public building question, and what's before us, I think you're in a, in a good shape to explain where you sit as a vendor or a potential recommended winner of an RFP. But this, this, what's, what I read here includes county and state buildings, which we don't know who that party's going to be, and if, I did a, a rough analysis, and I may be wrong about the actual measurements, but there could be city, county, and state with parking garages and different facilities still getting above the 15 feet, we, there could be potentially 30 locations that, that have these, these on it, and most of them are not city-owned assets. So the county's hungry for money, the state's hungry for money, but you understand the city's perspective, and I appreciate that, and you, you've done all, you've been doing your work, and the stakeholders have been doing their work, but I don't see the county or the state here telling us what their commitment, they may submit a master sign plan, and once they get it approved, we can never address content again. At least with you, the city has a contract. We won't, the city doesn't have a contract with the county, they don't have a contract with the state, and it's the unintended consequences of, once Pandora's box is opened, where does this take us? And I think the private sector, I'm surprised there's only a few of them here, but there, I would suspect the private sector has much more to be impacted by this than just the city buildings. So that's, that's what I was trying to find. Those are the questions I think we should ask, and see how we can make this work if we, if we can get all the answers.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, address Commissioner Truesdale's question. It was the idea of staff to include both Clark County and the state in this ordinance, knowing that, just like us, they are also looking for revenue streams. However, we have no idea if the county and the state are looking at doing building wrap. And we would be more than amenable to remove both of those entities from this ordinance if it is felt that there are too many unanswered questions in terms of what they might be able to do. And Commissioner Truesdale, you are right, that we, the city, do have the ability to limit what might be put on the city facilities through our contract, but we, as the city, don't have that same assurance from either the county or the state. And so again, we would be more than happy to remove both of those entities from this ordinance if it is felt that it's inappropriate to include them at this time.
May I ask a question?
Okay, go with one.
It's a quick one. I guess it would be to Mr. Kern and Mr. McCullough. If, so, we're talking about the, let's just say our new city hall would be considered a city building that would be a great place to start one of these beautiful wraparound signs, would that be fair to say?
Actually, Commissioner Quinn, I think that would be more appropriate for staff to answer those questions relative to city facilities.
Okay, so, so give me three city facilities that would be right to wrap right now.
One of the ones that has already been brought up in testimony that's been given here this evening, as an example, would be the Development Services Center, which is located at Rancho in US 95. The city hall facility, the new city hall facility, may not lend itself so well to building wrap, just because of the LED features that it has on the building itself, and so that might make it a little bit difficult to wrap that facility. However, the new city parking structure, which would be located across the street that is under construction right now, would also lend itself to building wrap. Potentially Fire Station Number One, which is on the north side of the freeway, might lend itself to building wrap, but visibility would be a question there. There are other city facilities that would qualify under this, for example, the municipal pool, which is located adjacent to Fire Station Number One, the senior center there. The problem with those facilities is that they are only one-story in height, visibility is limited, it's questionable whether they would meet the minimum size requirement. Other facilities, such as the Fifth Street School, which is a historic structure, would be inappropriate for it, because, number one, it lacks the wall space to do it, it's a one-story building, and it's a historic property, so I don't think the city would have any interest in doing that. So there are limitations in terms of the city facilities that we have in the downtown area, based on their height, visibility, and other things, but looking at those that would be appropriate, three, Development Services Center, the new parking structure, and perhaps Fire Station One.
Well, I, I think where I'm going with this is that, and my, this is just my opinion, is that we put so much money into these buildings as taxpayers to make them look good and, and to build them the parking structure, you know, these buildings, and now it seems like we're going to be going backwards and putting something on them to try to relinquish some money from the city, when we, if we would, if they, I just think that they're, we're covering up what we've built, and I, to me, it's, it's masking our city and what we've always had, or what, what we've already paid for. Does that make sense? It's like, like, I understand that the city would make money, but we've already spent money for it to look good, so why do we need to go backwards? I mean, I know you'll do great, I wish I was you, but the bottom line for me is, if we build something beautiful, I don't want to cover it up, if it's a state building and my taxes went to it. And I have a problem with this, and I, and I don't, and every picture you showed us was of a concert or something in Phoenix, or a public building or something like that, which is all great, you see them on the signs of hotels and stuff, but, but that's not my tax dollars. My tax dollars built the building that you want to wrap. So if we're going to wrap the buildings, I think we should wrap something that we haven't built yet, so we don't waste the money wrapping it. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm just saying, if we build something beautiful, I don't want to put something on top of it.
Let's, let's let staff answer those kinds of questions.
Mike, do you understand what I'm trying to say, Mr. Flynn?
I've, I've got questions I'd like to ask staff, and it probably revolves around consistency. You know, we've had, for years, many comments, complaints, and criticism to the various government entities for having different rules, about many different things, about how you get a business license, about how you get a building permit, about how things are inspected, about how you get permits, you know? And here we are, starting off on new territory, and I think it would be the opportunity to be consistent. And I don't mean just consistent between what the city and the county and the state might do, but in terms of the actual ordinances that they, they, they adopt, there's considerable amount of revenue to be generated by this. And I'm not ignoring that. At the same time, I can't ignore the millions of dollars that have been spent of taxpayers' monies to make our public buildings attractive, to create a sense of quality to our public buildings. We've received a lot of criticisms and a lot of compliments for some of the things that we've done. I think that if we were to go back and say, well, let's redesign City Hall, the new City Hall, so that it can be the backdrop for a big sign, we could probably save five, $10 million in construction costs, just to have the walls flat and painted just a primer gray, you know? But yet, now we're thinking, thinking about, well, we're going to generate some revenue, and how long is it going to take us to recover that $5 million bucks? And what is that going to do in terms of the aesthetics to downtown? That, that's one, that's two. One is the, the potential for inconsistency, second is ignoring the money that's been invested in preparing attractive buildings. Another one is that we need consistency between what we do with public buildings versus what we might permit for privately-owned buildings. I, I think that we need to be fair, I don't think we need to give a government building a greater, greater break, and therefore, a business advantage over a commercial operation. I, I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's an appropriate role for government, quite candidly. I think that, in terms of the, of the size of these structures, and the expense of putting up a wrap, even if we're dealing with just a simple, flat wall, that's going to be a minimum 1,000 feet, and a maximum of God knows how large, it's going to be expensive to put that wrap up, which translates into, whatever goes up there is going to go up there for a considerable period of time. You know, we talk about lots of money, I'd like to know what lots of money translates to in terms of numbers. I'd also like to have in consideration the amount of money that's going to be required out of the DA's office for defending the various issues that come forward, like, you've let them put up a Ford sign on the side of City Hall, while we wanted to put up a Chevrolet sign, or let's, let's have fun with it and say a Toyota sign, you know, what have you got against a Japanese product? And take that off to the DA to defend the decision. You know, are we going to say, certain liquids are good, you can advertise milk, but you're certainly not going to advertise alcohol, or drinks involving, you know, Coca-Cola or Pepsi, or that kind of stuff? I, I see that as being just different. Who gets the money and what's it earmarked for? Does it go directly to the, the city coffers? And what's the purpose? Is it to reduce our current taxes, or is it to avoid future increases in taxes? Some of the, some of the most significant opportunities for this type of advertising probably go around the convention center, with short-term type of, of advertising in conjunction with a, a convention that might be in town. And if there are inconsistencies as to what goes on down on the Hilton, I know it's within the county, but what goes on, you know, a couple of hundred yards south of us should have something to do with what we allow on our end. I just, I just see the potential for lots of different things, you know? One of the speakers came up here and mentioned the stakeholders' meetings that have gone on for a couple or three years. I don't know what kind of stakeholder meetings have gone on involving the public building portion, you know? Have they been as thorough? You know, so those are some of my concerns, and I think we're moving ahead at breakneck speed for no apparent reason, you know? I, I don't see, let's, let's, let's don't just open ourselves up to the potential for spending the next few years in court defending a decision that was made quickly. I'd rather to have it thought out, get a lot of public input from people, from the different perspectives, and see what happens. And again, right back to my initial comments, I think we ought to strive to have consistent rules for public buildings versus private buildings, and what goes on within the city and what goes on at the county. I think the rules ought to be pretty much the same, and a level playing field for all participants in this game.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple, a couple of questions. I, I've heard a couple times up here we say it's taxpayers, taxpayers' money, and, and I guess my question to the city is, how come we haven't had a, an open forum where, where the, where the public can come in and weigh in? Because I think you probably get some comments from, from, from youth groups, schools, all those stakeholders that are, for lack of a better word, the taxpayers' money is going into that, and, and I haven't seen any input from them as well. So that would be one of my questions, is how come we haven't opened this up to the public, since it's the taxpayers' money and the taxpayers' buil, building?
Mr. Chairman, does anyone here have the answer to the question on how much money would be raised over a one-year period from putting these super graphics on city buildings?
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, that would be one question that would be for Elite Media, not for staff to answer.
And, and how would we know until you actually bid the things? There's no answer to that question, so we're gambling.
Well, it's going to come down, you know, that's a simple answer, it's who's going to write the biggest check. It's just like you said, Mr. Chairman, if it comes down between the...
Let's say the biggest check is $12. I don't want to play it.
Why, why would we make a decision on a land use issue by how much money we can make? I mean, if it's a, if it's $100,000, we're okay with it, if it's $10, we're not okay with it? All we're doing is to say, and in that regard, we're saying, what we are, we're just negotiating price.
I've heard that joke before, and I know exactly what it alludes to.
I mean, it, these could, we've seen them in the county, some of them work very well, and those are hotels, and they, they bring great interest in the building, but I've never seen those graphics bring people to town. I mean, this isn't, billboards like any other point-of-purchase sign, or directional sign, is only siphoning off what's already there. So all this advertising is going to take advantage of the market that exists, it's not going to make the market greater. And we're gonna, we're gonna sit here and look at this, the hotel should be at the table. There's a lot of buildings. We, we've heard, Commissioner, I mean, Director Bag brought up the, the point that the city wouldn't, he doesn't think the city would wrap the Fifth Street School. I don't think they would either, but, like, I don't think they would wrap the Mob Museum that we, that we're, we've spent a fortune building and trying to bring people downtown. But the next guy sitting in that chair may think wrapping the Mob Museum was the greatest idea, because that's where he comes from. So before we, we just open this up and, and do this, we should all ask the right questions. This isn't a money, it should never be a money issue if we're going to sell our community out. It, we need to say, what do we want as a community? What, what does the city of Las Vegas want in this urban core that we're spending a fortune redeveloping and, and building, and encouraging people to come down here and, and be walkable, and, and all of these things? And we're sitting here arguing about how we're going to monetize, and that's the proper term of the day, is how we monetize our assets. Well, monetize is you sell it, but you get to keep them. Well, that's what we're doing. We will be talking about selling our, our building space, selling our visual impact, and we're not really asking, what is the quality that's created by it? While I think there's some graphics that would create nice streetscape, there's others that I don't believe would. So how, how do we get to those answers? Because there's a lot of communities that have these signs, but they also might have, they might be a broad community with, where we don't have these multiple jurisdictions. I mean, you can go to the county right now, and there's a moratorium on billboards, that's off-premise, I'm not saying billboards, but off-premise, new off-premise, but yet, they've approved a 500-foot Ferris wheel with LED on the side that is going to show, supposedly show all kinds of graphics. They've approved a several-hundred-foot building that is made of a sign at Harmon and Las Vegas Boulevard. That may make sense. But while they've said no to billboards, the airport in its little overlay, it puts up new billboards every time they think they need more revenue. So government is always, is not always been in the position to say, we'll make the tough decisions. And this one should be a very tough decision before we go down this road.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, please.
Just listening to all the comments and points that have been made tonight, the thing that's abundantly clear, we're not equipped at this time to even address this issue. And so my recommendation's going to be table it, or push it down for further study, I, I hate to use that bureaucratic term, further study, but, you know, this is one that really needs to be looked in, there needs to be liaisons with the private sector and what they're doing, stealing your point on this, and so bottom line, we're just not ready to deal with this tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
I, I have to concur. You know, as I came in here tonight, I wanted to say at first I was concerned, really what I'm thinking is, I just have a ton, a ton of questions, and I think the, the public will have just as many, and just as we ask for neighborhood meetings, for someone doing something that we think may be controversial, I, I think we do need to have some type of public forum and gain their input.
Yeah, right, and then, let me just summarize the thing with another, another minor thought. You know, we've all heard about the business concept of supply and demand. What we're talking about here is demand and supply. You know, if we've got X amount of demand, and we're going to increase the supply by 30 units, is that in fact going to drive down the price? And so all this wonderful revenue that we're selling ourselves out for, potentially, emotionally charged words, I apologize, but if we're really into it to get as much money as possible out of it, are we simply driving down the price for everybody involved in this game, public and private ventures? No one has shown me any data that says there's a crying demand for additional... No one has shown me any data that says there's a crying demand for additional sides of buildings to contain advertisement. You know, if there's any empirical data to support this great demand, you know, bring it forward, but I think that's just another question that needs to be brought out. So, I think we're ready for a motion, unless anybody else has any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just for the record, one of the things that I think I want to go back and address is relative to the approval process. It was stated that, you know, if there were someone else in my seat, they might have a different opinion, and that's one of the reasons why, and this is important also for the private sector, this is one of the reasons why we do have a public hearing process as part of the approval process for the super graphic signage, that it requires a master sign plan, which is either approved or denied by the planning commission using the criteria that we've identified as part of this ordinance. So, ultimately, if there were proposals that were to come forward saying, let's wrap the Fifth Street School, and here's how we're going to do it, the planning commission may say, this is inappropriate, it's a historic structure, and the wrap signage doesn't fit with the articulation or the fenestration of the building. And so, again, that's why a public hearing process is built into this, and that's something that should be kept in remembrance in case the private sector comes forward with a building wrap ordinance. So, I just wanted to add that to you. And then, secondly, I think it's important for the city council to have an opportunity to review this and to discuss it as well. And so, while you may do as you wish and motion as you wish, just keep in mind that I think it's appropriate that the city council also have the opportunity to weigh in on the merits of wrapping civic buildings or not.
And I think that we certainly should open any public hearing to the city council and let them come. Wasn't suggesting that they be excluded at all. So, we're still ready for a motion, I guess.
Well, here's my point, if the motion is up to hold the item, if the motion is up to hold, we're going to hold it for, what, 30 days, and between that and bringing it back, what's going to occur? What's going to occur? Are we going to hold, are we going to get some input from the public? Are we going to get some input? What are we holding it? And I'm all in agreeance with holding it, but I want something to happen between now and the next time we bring it back.
I think that we had one of the stakeholders involved in the discussions of wrapping public buildings, or private buildings, rather, say that it was two or three years where the hearings have gone on. So, I think this whole concept may be premature. You know, it's like the same, we're going to have a public hearing at the signage, you know, what goes up the signage is, it's way late. It's like deciding what color dress you're going to buy after you've made a decision way ahead of time that you're going to spend your entire budget on materials. You know, let's talk about the whole thing all at once, you know, what are the parameters? You know, by adopting this ordinance, we would be setting the parameters, and the parameters may be woefully inadequate. The issues that need to be discussed maybe haven't been discussed. Certainly, the part about having them be not mirrored, but perhaps adopted in, at the same meeting so that all the issues relating to public versus private development of these things can happen at the same time. You know, I don't want my point about giving a governmental entity an unfair advantage over a private entity, I don't think that's fair. How can we assure that that's not going to happen if the other one hasn't reached any kind of consensus as to how it should be approached in a two-year discussion period? So, I don't say, well, let's hold it 30 days, that's woefully inadequate. I think they're going to have to have time to have several public hearings to identify who the stakeholders are, involve the county, they're preparing a similar type ordinance, I understand.
Well, I agree, but aren't the stakeholders the people?
Certainly.
The schools?
And their representatives, yeah.
Well, let's get a forum so that they can come, because right now, I see, all I see out here are folks that have a stake in it, but I'd like to hear from the public, I'd like to hear from the schools, I'd like to hear from organizations and what they feel, because I think, you know, at the end of the day, the last photo that Mr. McCullough put up with the scantily clad lady in the bikini, that's what I think you're probably going to see more of on these buildings than anything else. And I think if we include those stakeholders in here, I think we'll, I think we will hear a strong message from them. I'm even concerned with the kids that go to the Las Vegas Academy, that come and visit in the downtown area, that have to go and come, and I'd be interested to hear what those parents and those taxpayers who pay for these buildings have to say.
Couldn't agree more.
Well, the one thing that we're not going to be able to do tonight is put together the plan here at this table. I mean, it's, we've just been working with this for a short period of time, and obviously, 30 days is clearly not going to get it, so I'm going to move to table the matter.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. The motion to carry, or motion to table carries. Next item up is item 42, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless the subject's on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Just a heads up, there's a problem that's coming. There's a billboard down there at Stewart and Easter that we've had problems with before. Those people, there's a bike trail that goes by there, and they've been given this nothing but problems. Now, it's been about five years now since that billboard's been addressed, so one of these days is going to be coming up. And I want everybody to know that they've been given RTC a bad time, code enforcement is getting a bad time down there, and just a heads up.
From your perspective, who's given the bad time? The billboard owners or the residents or the hikers?
The billboard owners is keeping the billboard in good shape. It's an ideal place for the billboard. The person that owns the property, there's no problem, she's an old lady, but she sold the building, the lady that owns the property sold the building to Solon's Tire, and they've been given nothing but problems. So, just a heads up.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and adjourn the meeting. Thank you for watching and thank you for attending.